Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to today's Chicago Board of Education meeting. Today is May 24th, 2017. We're holding today's meeting in the boardroom at 42 West Madison Street. I'm Frank Clark. On behalf of my fellow board members, I want to thank you all for coming today. Our order of meetings will be as follows. Honor and excellence, our CEO report, public participation. We'll go into executive session, followed we will return and begin our voting process. As I do at every meeting, I always remind everyone that's going to be participating, one, please try to adhere to your two-minute timeframe in order for everyone to have an opportunity to say what they've come here to share with us. And most importantly, we are there. Everyone sees what we do. It is so important, I think, particularly for the young people who view this or who sit in the audience, that they see us acting in a professional and courteous way. And that is something that I ask for at every meeting and truly expect from the participants. Madam Secretary, please lead us in the pledge.
Thank you, Mr. President. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty, justice
The regular board meeting of Wednesday, May 24th, 2017, is called to order. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. President. Member Furlong.
Present.
Member Rivera.
Present.
Vice President Guzman.
Present.
Member Ward.
Present.
Member Father Garandini.
Present.
And President Clark.
Present.
We have six members present. There is a quorum, and I would also like to recognize Forrest Claypool, our CEO, Ronald Marmer, our general counsel, Dr. Janice Jackson, our chief education officer, and Latonya McDade, chief of teaching and learning officer, and also our honorary student board member, Dariana.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Today is Dariana's last board meeting. She's, she'll be, let's see, you'll be a senior next year, and after high school, you're planning to attend Florida A&amp;M University. And you're going to major in, is that right? Why did everybody smile?
Ron's all in honor.
Oh. You know, sometimes I think I'm saying something very witty, but I don't know what. Okay, took me off base. But the most interesting part here is that you're majoring in psychology. I don't know whether attending these board meetings has sort of focused her on her major or not, but it's a service we all need. Would you like to make a comment right now?
Good morning, President Clark and board members. My experience in the boardroom has been an inspiration. Attending every intense meeting has informed me of what problems actually occur around me. Hearing the different public speakers just made me want to be 10 times helpful than I was before. I would also like to give a heartwarming thanks to Ms. Beltran and Ms. Ward for making me feel so welcome and on task all the time. Also, I would like to give a special thanks to my counselor and other staff members at Corliss High School for believing in me and giving me the confidence that I need for this position on the board. Last but not least, I would like to give a great loving thanks to my chaperone, Mr. Holland. He held my hand through this tough process and stuck by my side at all times from beginning to end. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Susan has a little show of appreciation from us. Thank you, dear. Okay, if you want to proceed, Dr. Jackson, with honor and excellence.
Good morning, President Clark and other board members. As you are aware, we begin every board of education meeting by celebrating the amazing accomplishments of our students and school communities. Today, we start by recognizing this year's Student Advisory Council. As they enter the room, these students are made up of various grade levels in different schools throughout the city. They serve on the CEO Student Advisory Council for at least one year. Some students return for a second year. And their goal is to identify challenges that impact students' lives in the district, make policy recommendations, and really keep me hip to what's going on in the district. So I appreciate them for that. Their work is facilitated by MiCA Challenge, an amazing partner here, and we have people from MiCA represented to speak on their behalf. First, the chief programmatic officer, Mr. Stephen Rosato. And then also, we're going to allow one of our students to speak and talk about that experience. So, Mr. Rosato.
Good morning. Thank you for having us. I'm honored to be here to introduce the CPS Student Advisory Council. We are very much fans of CPS and doing this work in partnership with y'all. We value the work that you are doing with these young people. Particularly, Dr. Jackson, the mission you have for elevating your voice across the district and working with young people, not only here but in schools all across the district, to bring their voice to the table in decision-making around issues that are impacting them in their schools and community. Also, your team as well with Jessica and Eva and Christina. We do appreciate working with them as well and all the support they have offered to our young people throughout the year. They've done really fantastic work and will continue to do great work moving forward for those who are returning next year as well as those who are graduating but will be proud this year but will be proud CPS alums and continue to move the mission moving forward in their next phases of their young careers and their educations. One other point that I just wanted to note is also just to acknowledge the facilitator for the council at MiCA Challenge that we have, my colleague Monica Gutierrez, who has done an amazing work with them. She truly, truly is like one of the best youth workers I've ever met. I've been in this field for quite a long time, and I have met many youth workers, and Monica is fantastic. And the relationship she builds with these young people in the community they've built together is very special and something that's amazing to watch. So I want to turn it over, though, to one of the young people to speak actually about the work they have done, Pedro Garcia, who is a senior at Roosevelt High School and will be attending North Park University next year. So give it up for Pedro.
Pedro.
Thank you very much, Steve. Good morning. I'm Pedro from Roosevelt High School, and I am representing the Student Advisory Council. The Student Advisory Council is a collective of 20 young leaders from across the Chicago City who are passionate about education and addressing issues affecting their schools and them. With support of MiCA, the Student Advisory Council has learned about different factors that impact inner-city public, inner-city, give me a second, sorry about that. Inner-city public education. And met with several stakeholders, activists, and educational representatives, including Chief Education Officer, Dr. Janice Jackson. With these opportunities, the council developed and curated recommendations for the Chief Education Officer of the Chicago Public Schools. As the Student Advisory Council, we have researched on ways that other schools throughout the district have engaged with their communities, met with Chicago-based organizations that boost the reputation in neighborhood schools, and even put together our own initiative to create pathways from elementary schools to neighborhood high schools. I joined the Student Advisory Council because, as a student activist, I want to take initiative and have an impact on young people across the city. My favorite part about being the Student Advisory Council is the level of engagement we have with Dr. Janice Jackson. And also, we got the opportunity to volunteer and attend Obama's farewell speech in which we got to meet our true idol, Bill Nye the Science Guy. The Student Advisory Council is essential for the Chicago Public Schools for young people to be able to inform policy and issues that affect them on a daily basis. Thank you for honoring us and supporting our work and reminding us that, as young leaders, we can make a change. And without further ado, let's take a selfie.
All right, guys. Nice roundup.
Okay. Quickly, quickly, quickly. I'll smile in the back. This is a student council ritual, so.
Get it up. Get it up. Bill Nye taught us this, by the way. How to take perfect selfies.
All right, let's give them a big round of applause. The one thing I do want to say, it is a fun group, as you can tell, but the students have had a lot of amazing experiences. In addition to attending Obama's farewell speech, they have supported us at the Principal's Administration Summit and served on several panels. And although we have fun, don't let the smiles fool you, this is a really tough group. And I would just have to say that the level of engagement has been an honor for me. And the thing that I've learned most working with you is really the importance of neighborhood schools. Neighborhood schools are really represented in this group, and I just want to make sure that the public knows that you are fighting on their behalf and making sure that they have not only policies that support neighborhood schools but the resources that they need. So I want to thank you and thank MiCA for your advocacy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As a group exes, speaking for myself as a member of the board, but on behalf of the board also, all of you folks, you take the time to be good students and also your desire to achieve leadership roles at such a young age, it's good for you and great for us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Okay. Next, we want to honor the Illinois School Counselor Award recipients for 2017. These counselors and school leaders are responsible for some of the most impactful work that has occurred in CPS this school year. I'm reminded of the quote by First Lady Obama from last year where she talked about the importance of school counselors. I would read it, but I want to make sure I attribute everything to her unlike some other folks, so I won't go that far. But I will say that from the heights of Washington, D.C., down to the board and across the city, we recognize the tremendous impact that school counselors make every day. And we're really excited to have representation from Chicago Public Schools being noted not only as the School Counselor of the Year for 2017, Ms. Kirsten Perry, but we also have Taff Principal Mark Grishalber here, who was named the Illinois School Counselor Administrator of the Year. In addition, she's also joined, they're also joined by two additional school counselors who received an honorable mention, Ms. Mary Resendez of Crane and Kelly Chaney, I'm sorry, I got it right, good, of, no, I'm not going to get this right, Lavazoo. I always put the emphasis on the wrong part, and Tracy keeps telling me that. In any way, I just want to congratulate you for the difference that you're making. We're talking about the work of counselors today, so it was only befitting that we acknowledge you. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Perry to speak on behalf of the group.
All right. Thank you all so much for having us here. Again, my name is Kirsten Perry, and I am the School Counselor at Lawndale Elementary Community Academy, which I'm very proud to be a part of. So first, I wanted to thank the Chicago Board of Education and Chicago Public Schools leadership for taking the time to honor school counselors. School counselors work as advocates for students, beginning and pre-K, all the way through 12th grade. It is our mission to work with administrators to create student-focused and data-driven interventions that address academic, social, emotional, and college and career readiness standards for students, again, beginning and pre-K all the way through 12th grade. We also work as collaborators. We collaborate with administration, with parents, community partners, as well as students to create systemic change throughout our schools. I'm very honored to be here and to represent school counselors throughout this district and the change and impact that we do make on students at both the elementary and high school level. So thank you so much for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If you wouldn't mind, in case the board wants to address Mary, I don't know if the board has any remarks for the council.
I spoke first, last, so I'll see if any of the other board members have comments.
Okay. I just want to say thank you for all you do. I know that in many cases you're understaffed, and I wish we could do more. But you do the job in spite of it, so I just want to say thank you so much to all of you for what you do for the truth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I just wanted to add, I started my career as a school counselor, and I know what that, what your position is like. And I enjoyed it immensely, and it has such a great service to both our elementary and high school students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I want to turn it over to Forrest to finish the CEO update.
Thank you, Janice. Last week, Janice and I joined school district leaders from throughout Illinois down in Springfield for a day of action. As families, educators, and community leaders gathered outside the Illinois State Capitol, we called on legislators to support and pass education funding reform. As I said in front of the Capitol Building that day with my fellow school leaders from around Illinois, we have in this state not one but two separate and unequal systems of funding education. In fighting one of these separate but unequal systems, the one based on income and class, we are united with hundreds of rural and suburban districts from around the state serving low-income children. In the other, we stand alone in a separate but unequal funding system based on the color of our children's skins. In Springfield, I was moved by the number of supporters who spoke passionately about their children and who demanded with one voice that this injustice stop. These are stories I heard last year as well, when I joined downstate leaders in the old state capital of Vandelia, where Lincoln once served in the legislature. Once again, we saw colleagues from around the state whose budgets are being squeezed because the state does not account for their low-income students and who are also struggling because of the late payments from the state and its current tortured budget stalemate. You pair these late state payments with the type of unfair and unequal system, both based on not only income but race, and we are forced, along with other school districts, to move in directions that choose between the lesser of vile options. Governor Rauner wants Chicago students to get by on baling wire and chewing gum, the exact words his representatives used. And his plan accomplishes that. It bridges CPS through the next few months, will keep schools open until June 20th, will make the pension payment that no other school district in the state has to make, and we will meet our obligations until we receive more funding later this summer. But until the state of Illinois funds Chicago's minority students at the same levels as the rest of predominantly white Illinois, our financial challenge will continue. That's why CPS cannot and will not give up this fight. Chicago students deserve a state that treats all students fairly. They need a funding formula that does not discriminate against children based on their zip code, their family's income, or the color of their skin. We cannot stop until this is a reality for Chicago schoolchildren, not until Governor Rauner and the rest of Illinois provide resources that are worthy of our students, who despite this broken system are graduating in record numbers and leading their peers across the country in academic growth. So we want to thank everyone who has supported us on this journey, especially the CPS students, families, and staff who have persevered through another school year plagued by fiscal crisis. We pledge not to give up until this fight is won, and we hope you will continue to support us. Thank you.
Thank you, Forrest. Last but not least, board members, I would like to welcome first Chief Latonya McDade of Teaching and Learning and also Chief of College and Careers Alan Mather to the podium to do a special presentation on how we plan to strengthen the high school graduation requirements. Today, we are asking the board to vote on three proposed changes, and I would like to allow CPS leadership to walk you through those changes and answer any specific questions that you may have. As they approach the podium, I want to remind board members as well as members of the public that this proposed change is directly aligned to the new vision for Chicago Public Schools that was recently released this school year. One of those commitments was to maintain and actually improve upon the academic progress for Chicago Public Schools. Despite our financial crisis, it is important that we continue to lay the groundwork so that CPS is a strong academic institution despite some of those challenges that we may face. The proposal today is directly aligned to the high school strategy that we recently released that looks at equity and access, so access for all students to high-quality schools and program options, as well as increasing the quality of the programming within each school. And then finally, providing more outlets for advocacy, which you saw a little bit of that today when we had the students from our Student Advisory Council speak. I should also note that students, principals, as well as other stakeholders, such as parents and community partners, have all weighed in on the proposed changes that will be presented today, and we look forward to your questions and comments. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Chief McDade and Chief Mather.
Thank you so much, and good morning, members of the board. One of the proposals is, or part of the proposal is to grow, to build on our already impressive results with college enrollment and college persistence, is to continue to recognize the multiple pathways that students take and support them in those multiple pathways. Currently, about 60% of our students already complete a concrete post-secondary plan, so this builds on the work that our school counselors and post-secondary leadership teams already do by proposing a graduation requirement that students have a concrete post-secondary plan as they exit high school. Looking at college acceptance letters received and returned, military acceptance and enlistment letters, acceptance into a jobs program, into a trades or pre-apprenticeship program, acceptance into a gap year program, or current employment and continued employment after high school. We want to ensure that our students have this preparation, that our schools are focused on that preparation, and this is one additional way to support our students.
Good morning. Good morning, President Clark and members of the board. The second of the three proposals happens to be science, and what we are proposing is a change to the current requirement. So the current requirement is that students do take three years of science. One requirement is biology of the three. The other two can be a combination of the other lab sciences. This requirement is, we are proposing a change in the requirement that students would take, continue to take the three years of science, but that the sequence would be, not necessarily the sequence, but the courses would be biology, chemistry, and physics. And schools would be able to have the flexibility to decide the actual sequence of those courses. This requirement really is founded in two basic principles. One, the first being that there's alignment to the new next-generation science standards. So we want to be in alignment with those standards, and these disciplines actually align to the standards, and they integrate the environmental science and the earth and space. And so that's preparation for college preparatory work. The second is in equity and excellence. And so we want to stabilize the educational experience for all students and make sure that we're providing high-quality, robust curriculum and instruction across the district, regardless of where students attend, what their zip code is, where they're from. We want to make sure that all students have access to high-quality college preparatory education coursework in their schools that are preparing them for STEM fields as they move forward. So those are some of the major areas that this addresses. Also, if approved by the board, this graduation requirement will go into effect for the class of 2022, which would give us a year-out opportunity to prepare schools for this shift. The majority of our schools are already offering the physics and the chemistry, and so we want to make sure that all schools are prepared for this. I also want to just note that, you know, Chicago continues to really be a trailblazer in this work. Right now, other large districts such as Baltimore and Boston have also adopted the same science sequence. And with the release of the next-generation science standards, New York is also researching this current science sequence.
Before you go on, since this is a change in graduation standards, even if some schools were doing it up to a certain point, but this is a substantive change, every substantive change I've been a part of has had a disruptive component. What's the disruptive component to this change?
Some of the feedback that we received, to Dr. Jackson's point, we did engage principals across all geographic networks. We surveyed, actually, our Student Advisory Council and got feedback from them. We surveyed and engaged LSCs. Some of the concern around this really, I think overwhelmingly, everyone agreed that this is the right way to go in terms of college preparatory work. Some of the concerns is around other courses like environmental science, not wanting to eliminate courses. And so one thing that I didn't mention is that this would not eliminate those courses, that students would still be able to take environmental science and earth space as electives. And I also want to call out that all of the AP courses would meet this criteria, as well as the IB sequence, so it wouldn't disrupt the IB sequence either.
The only other thing I would add to that, President Clark, is that schools would have to rearrange their course offerings if they are not currently offering biology, chemistry, and physics per the presentation. But that was one of the reasons why we proposed announcing it now, giving schools an opportunity to make those changes. And we know, as, you know, one school, for example, Amundson High School, is transitioning this fall because of the new requirements. So some schools will be able to make that shift very quickly, and there are other schools that we're going to have to work with that will require more time to make that shift. But part of the implementation was to announce it now and give people a year out to start making those transitional changes.
Can you be a little more specific about the kinds of things that you're considering in that ramp-up period, right in those couple of years? Because I know you've been thoughtful about it, both in the, and I'd love to hear that both for the new science requirements as well as for the new post-secondary graduation requirements. If you could just be a little more specific about the kinds of supports and resources that you're going to be exploring during this, you know, one- or two-year period and then over here in the two-year period.
One of the major things that we're exploring is the support to teachers in terms of professional learning throughout the year. That's one major one that we're preparing for, especially as we look at certifications and making sure that that's in place so that schools can offer these courses. The other really-
So a teacher that might have been teaching earth science has some time to get the resource, to get some education, get the certification to be able to teach physics.
And many of them, in doing the scan, there's teachers that have multiple certifications but may not have been teaching the physics or the chemistry. So we recognize that-
Additional P.
Exactly. That professional learning will need to take place during the year, that we're preparing to ramp up and implement this. The other major piece is curriculum. So we're also preparing to support all teachers with the necessary curriculum for instruction for all of these courses. So going into the 2018, the 2019 school year when students are required to take this, we also want to have in hand for all of these courses, the scope and sequence, as well as the planning guides for this, so that across the district, there's a common expectation according to the National, the next-generation science standards. So curriculum and training are the two major.
Got it. And then on the post-secondary plan piece, Alan?
Yeah, Learn Plan Succeed. Again, we've been doing one version of Learn Plan Succeed for a while, but the main supports coming in are ramping up to one college and career specialist per network to really work with school counselors and post-secondary leadership teams at each school to help prepare for this. But also, we've been working and have very positive communications with the funding community about expanding our college and career advising credential. So what that is, counselors, when going through a post-secondary program, typically do not get training on really preparing students for what's after high school. So this college and career advising credential really specifically does that intense training over eight different days, eight different sessions. And we've required it for one high school counselor in every high school, but this will be then rolled out to every counselor in every high, every high school counselor and I.
Great. Thanks.
I'm just, a comment, you know, I'm thrilled with the increase in rigor for our students. I know that our students will rise up to it. They always do. And my concern also was what Board Member Guzman brought up, and, you know, finding enough physics teachers and qualified people to address those issues, and I know you're working hard on that, so.
One of the things, yes, and that's definitely one thing that we're working with university partners with as well, and we'll be working with the talent department to make sure that we're supporting schools with recruitment.
I also want to call out that almost all of our schools have the certified teachers currently within the schools. We do have six, which we don't want to name publicly, but we're going to be working directly with those schools. They also happen to be schools that the district routinely supports through program support. So this would be one of the things that, you know, we'd have to get with those principals directly on to ensure that they have the proper staffing. But I just want to make clear that out of over 150 high schools, we only have six high schools that really don't have the staff with the proper certification in order to do this, and so they're going to be our first priority. And then the last piece, and I know Latonya has talked about this a little bit, is that this really is a major change, and it really does speak to our values as a district. We believe in high expectations but also support for our students. And the reason we believe in the high expectations is because we believe in our children. And this recommendation and the conversations that we've had with people has really opened up a dialogue around mindset. And, you know, believe it or not, there's still a lot of people who don't believe our children can have access to the courses that we're proposing today, and this administration rejects that completely. We know that there are doctors, there are researchers, there are all sorts of people, engineers, in these schools on the south side, west side, north side, throughout the city. And if we don't expose them early to a robust science curriculum, we are basically ensuring that they will not have access- that they will not have access to those STEM fields. And I know, Latanya, you had a data point about STEM fields and why this is important, but I'll, I'll close out that part of the remark by letting you talk a little bit about that.
So the, the United States Department of Commerce did a study on the STEM fields and really just showed that from 2008 to 2018, that the STEM fields are projected to grow 17, at a 17% rate in comparison to 9.8% for non-STEM fields. Additionally, the study also showed that, that individuals who have a STEM degree experience higher rate wages, even if they don't go into a STEM career. So there's, and those are just two kind of highlights that resonated, but there was an advanced study on that. And I think that that just speaks volumes to why we should really be preparing our students. About 7.6 billion, million jobs were in STEM, in STEM fields. So the demand is there, and we want to make sure that we're producing students that can actually fill that demand.
Probably 90% of the people know what STEM stands for, but for the 10%, it doesn't-
Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics. And we, we actually encourage, to the point about the coursework, we really are encouraging, we're only requiring, we're requiring the three years of science, but we really encourage students to take four years of science and four years of math, because going, especially if they are on the track to go into the STEM fields, they'll really need to take all of those years of math and science, and even taking the AP courses, which is why it's important that within this policy, we recognize and acknowledge that the AP courses will meet the requirement.
Last one.
The last of the three, financial education for all CPS students. So for the proposed policy, this is more of an enhancement than it is necessarily really a big change. We already have a requirement for consumer education, which is a state requirement, and it's a non-credit-bearing requirement that's pass or fail. And so that does, that's already taking place in our schools, and that will continue. The change really comes about in the fact that we're now not just focusing on consumer education, but financial education, financial literacy as a whole. The state did release standards for, for financial education, and so we want to make sure that every single school across the district, that students are going back to stabilizing the educational experience and making sure that all students are receiving robust quality curriculum. So we don't want some schools offering a full financial course throughout the year that covers all of the concepts, where another school may not, may only be offering a workshop that does not cover all of the core concepts. So when you look at the standards right now, there are six primary concept areas. One, economic concepts, banking, credit, money management, insurance, and investment. And so we are providing curriculum. With this proposed change, all schools will be required to implement a study, a unit of study, that addresses all of those six competencies so that we ensure that all students have access to those competencies. We like to think of our students as economic actors, that they'll be prudent savers, and savvy investors, and entrepreneurs, and philanthropists. And so we want to make sure that they're getting the kind of education that actually is preparing them for that. So schools will be required to implement the unit of study. It will still be a pass/fail, non-credit-bearing graduation requirement, but it will encompass so much more and align to the state standards. Some of the areas-
Does this mean that we're simply, have we not met state standards before?
We have, but we're going beyond.
So that's what I thought you were saying?
We're expanding beyond that.
We're not just meeting Illinois state standards for financial literacy, we're exceeding that?
We're exceeding.
Is that an accurate statement?
Yes.
Good.
We're exceeding expectations with this. And students also, schools will have flexibility in terms of, you know, where this is offered. So they can continue to still offer a full year-long course of study, but it also can be embedded within a course in social science, in math, or even in the business education CTE courses, it can be embedded there as well. Some of the things, supports that CPS is providing to meet the needs of schools, just keeping in line with the supports we talked about with science. So we are providing a guidance document that articulates the expectations and clarifies the process by which schools will report on implementation, and identifies resources such as professional learning activities, as well as support with student programming and curriculum. So we are developing a baseline curriculum to share launched lessons that identify the appropriate lessons and activities that support student learning in each of the conceptual areas that I just identified, and as well as providing exemplars of quality assessments. And, and we are receiving funding for that through Discover, so they've been funding the support of the development of this curriculum that will be available to all of the schools. We also are producing an annual scan. So we have about 26 partners that support us in the financial literacy work, and they have really been tried and true in supporting this work, and some of them already have curriculum in their particular focus areas, and so that will continue. But the scan would allow us to match partners with schools that don't currently have the support. So we have some schools that might have five partners and another school that might not have one. And so we want to convene our partners and make sure that we're matching partners with schools so that all schools are being supported, and they will be able to continue to use the curriculums that they're implementing in the schools, but we will also have the curriculum that's available to ensure that all schools are, we're rightsizing the district in terms of the educational experience and making sure that all students are being exposed to the six key competencies that are required. So those are some of the ways that we plan to support the implementation of this, for this particular policy change. And I really want to just kind of publicly thank all of the partners that we have. Again, it's about 26, so I won't go through the entire list. I do want to call out the City Treasurer's Office, who's been supporting us in this work, and they have, you know, endorsed this particular graduation requirement and provided feedback in this along the way. So we've had some really amazing partners that have supported us even throughout us going through the, the financial crisis that we're in. They've really stepped up to support our schools to continue this work.
Thank you. Board members, questions?
It's not a question, it's just a comment. I think that this is much needed, because in our neighborhoods and in our schools, one of the deficits is that students and families don't know how to manage money well. But I also think that it's great in a time that these partners have supported us, and it should be emphasized, they come at no cost to us. So I think that that's a really great thing.
Yeah.
The new graduation requirements, the term "new" implies it didn't exist before. So we're addressing an issue that we have seen over a period of time. We, while our students have met state standards and maybe even exceeded them in some cases, we obviously felt that our graduating students didn't have all the tools that they needed to compete in the world as it exists today. This is designed to do that, particularly with respect to STEM, the financial literacy. At the end of the day, our students should be more competitive, more capable of succeeding in college, better able to frankly compete for and get the better-paying jobs. So it has an economic component, a financial literacy component, and in many, in many ways, an overall life achievement component in the sense that our students are simply going to be better off. Not implying that prior to this, they didn't get a good education, this simply enhances that.
Yes.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And that concludes the CEO's report.
I have, Ron Denard, before you close up, well, you don't have a presentation, but you're going to talk. We have, we have two loans that the board's going to be asked to approve. I just want to make sure that you have the opportunity, not so much for the board, because we've all been briefed, but for the audience to understand the need for these loans.
Ron Denard, SVP of Finance. So the board, the loans that we are bringing to the board, I'll talk about the first one. The first one's called a grant anticipation note. The State of Illinois currently owes us $467 million, and as those payments are extremely late, they are more late than they've ever been in the history of the block grant program. So we are putting together a loan package, and we're asking for board approval. We'll send it out to bid, and we'll evaluate what is the best proposal, and we're getting a bank to loan those funds to us so that we can continue to make payments for our operations. And one of the payments that we, that we will make will be our pension payment. And again, we are the only school district in the State of Illinois, the only school district that has to take money out of its operations and make its own pension payment.
So before you go on to the second item, so the first request from CPS to the board is to approve a loan to make up for, what's the number, 400 and?
It's $467 million of block grants.
$467 million in state payments that we just haven't received. We're not talking about dollars in dispute, don't confuse it with some of the other issues you hear us talking about. This is simply the state not paying. And, and while we fully know or expect that those payments will come, the state's been very, very slow, slower than ever in the Chicago Board of, in CPS receiving those payments. So in order to continue operating and meet our obligations, we are taking out a loan. Go to the second item.
The, the second item is asking for increased board authority for a, it's called a working capital bond, where we, in the past, well, as far as our financing strategy of this year, we were going to do a working capital reimbursement bond, and we just want some additional board authority, just, just in case, while we're in the marketplace, that the market was, be good to us, and we'd be able to upsize the bond. We currently have $285 million of authority, and we're asking for an additional $215. We probably won't go out at 2, at 500 million, but we'll size the bond based on what our underwriters say the market capacity is. But if we see that opportunity, that we will seize it, and that brings cash into our operating account and helps us out in fiscal year 18.
Board members, are there any questions? Yes, Fowler.
Ron, if we vote, if we don't vote for this, these two resolutions, what's the consequences?
The, the consequences would be that we would be in dire financial shape in, in June, because again, the state owes us $467 million, and then the, the second bond deal helps us from July and going forth, sort of bridges, bridges us in July to get us to when our property taxes come in, and then we refinance our short-term loans. So they both, both loans are, items are very critical to our cash flow.
Ron, is another way of saying this, if the board were not to approve this, this is going back to Fowler guaranteeing his question, that we are, we will be facing the real likelihood of simply running out of money?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you very much, Ron.
Thank you.
Okay. I have one announcement to make. Every board meeting, I encourage people to use our website, which is cpsboe.org. This is, I think, a very helpful way for people to contact the board and have their issues addressed. Well, I think we still operate under the promise of getting a response back to you within a 48-hour period, and the responses are intended to be substantive, and not that we're just looking at the issue. So I encourage you to continue looking, using the website. It's also a way to schedule time with board members, and many of you continue to take advantage of that. Okay, and so we will now proceed with the public participation. Well, first off, I need Madam Secretary, please share the details for the next board meeting.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next board meeting will be held on Wednesday, June 28, 2017, at the CPS Loop Office. Advance registration will open at 10:30 a.m., Monday, June 26, 2017, and will close on Tuesday, June 27, 2017, at 5:00 p.m. or until all slots are filled, whichever is first. If anyone has any questions about this process, please contact the board office for our assistance. Thank you. And now, Mr. President, I would like to proceed with the public participation session and read the rules regarding public participation. Speakers, please listen while I provide directions for public participation. I will call your name and number when it is your turn to speak. When you hear your name, please immediately proceed to the staging area to the left of the podium and check in with a board office staff member, and we have Eric there to assist. You will be lined up in the right order. When it is your turn to speak, proceed to the podium and state your name. After you state your name, I will then start the two-minute clock, which is visible to all in the audience. I would also like to note that there is a timer on top of the podium for speakers to see. When there are 30 seconds remaining, the color will turn yellow, and when the two minutes are up, the light will turn to red. Please immediately take your seat when your time is up to allow for the next speaker to begin. Also, for anyone who plans to stand in support of a speaker, please be advised that the only walkway in the boardroom is behind the podium. Therefore, if you would kindly make a single file line and stand as near as a railing as possible, this will still allow people to pass through the area safely. Thank you. And, Mr. President, we do have representatives with us today and also elected officials, so I will call those individuals first. And I will begin with the designee representative for State Representative Teresa Ma from the Second District. She is Myra Lopez Zuniga, followed by Recording Secretary Michael Bronson from CTU, and then we will have the President of Local 143, Bill Iacola. Susan? Please state your name.
Good morning. My name is Myra Lopez Zuniga. I'm the District Director for Second District State Representative Teresa Ma. Our district encompasses the communities of Bridgeport, Chinatown, Pilsen, McKinley Park, Brighton Park, and Back of the Yards. I'm here on behalf of Representative Ma, she's in Springfield, to read a statement against the closure of the Seward Branch. Seward Community Arts Academy is a thriving school in Back of the Yards. The school currently has 718 students enrolled, according to CPS utilization reports. The Seward main building accommodates 570 students, which is why, for more than 30 years, CPS has leased the space, commonly known as a branch, to accommodate the rest of the student population. Even when the school's enrollment numbers dropped by 60 students this year, Seward is still at 92% utilization rate per CPS records. I am surprised and disappointed in CPS' decision to potentially close the branch in the 2018-2019 school year, even though the school's enrollment is still overcrowded by CPS-owned assessments. Furthermore, it is my understanding that the community has come before the board on multiple occasions to make a plea as to why the branch should remain open. I understand that the district is in dire need to assess costs and decrease spending whether, whether, well, sorry, whether it might, seems appropriate to do so, but I ask that your approach to balancing the budget, but I ask that your approach to balancing the budget is not done on the backs of communities like Back of the Yards, which cannot afford to lose any more of the meager resources that already exist in this community. Although Back of the Yards is a beautiful and close-knit community, it is a community that faces many hurdles. It is a community that lives with the constant threat of violence, and where a school branch closer would not only further demoralize residents. The Back of the Yards is a community whose demographics skew young, with about 40% of its population under the age of 21, which is no surprise as to why the Seward Academy has had to lease a branch for more than 30 years. And despite the fact that other schools have been building the area in recent decades, the enrollment numbers at Seward still surpass the capacity of its main building, which is only 570 students. The school has consistently been one of the top-performing schools in the community. Two years ago, they began the process of obtaining an IB middle-year's program. Seward currently uses nine classrooms at the branch building. The basement of the branch is also used for lunch and gym. If CPS were to close the branch, this will severely affect instruction at Seward, where every single classroom is already being utilized. Some classrooms might have to have multiple grades, diverse learners will have to give an instruction in closets, and Seward students will lose their health in art rooms, as well as the computer lab and the library, in order to accommodate the overcrowding of students. The lack of space and proper accommodations would only severely impact its IB application. The IB application requires the students in the middle-years program have a visual and performing arts class, in addition to a technology component. Without the space at the branch, the main building will not be able to accommodate both the influx of students and these classrooms that will support Seward certification as an IB middle-years school. Not to mention the consequences that overcrowding has on the effectiveness of instruction in the classroom. I strongly urge the CPS board to reconsider, to think hard about the consequences of your actions. We should be investing in communities like Back of the Yards, which is under the constant threat of violence, where there's a high density of low-income and immigrant residents. Back of the Yards has been targeted by ICE since the Trump administration took office. In one week, ICE was present in the community on four different occasions, resulting in individuals who ended up in deportation proceedings. The branch has been a place where the community and parents have gathered for Know Your Rights immigration trainings that prevent such instances from occurring without due that prevent such instances from occurring without due process. I understand we're facing hard times financially, especially amidst the current state budget impasse. I am aware of that, and I'm with you in that fight in Springfield. However, I also urge you to think equitable about the distribution of resources in the district. The children of Back of the Yards deserve our investment in their future, not decisions that undercut the opportunities for advancement. And very, very quickly, also my own words, I am actually an alumni of Seward Elementary. I have many fond memories of our arriving from Mexico at nine years old and attending fourth grade at the branch. My memories of my arrival in this country are inedibly tied with the Seward branch. It was at the branch where I was able to make friends, to learn English, to make sense of my new life in the U.S. as an undocumented student. It was a branch where I was able to participate in school talent shows, science fairs, and activities that allowed me to express myself and that frankly kept me off the streets in a community where there are not too many opportunities or safe spaces for youth. It pains me to say this, but Google Back of the Yards and you will find nothing but news articles about the multiple shootings that happened there, the two CPD officers who got shot as the most recent example of this. The branch might just be a simple facility on paper, but it is much more than that. It provides a space, a safe space for youth in our community. As an adult, I came back to Seward as a parent organizer. The branch allowed me to host multiple workshops for parents because there were literally no other spaces available for me to meet with parents and host workshops. Many times, I met and interviewed parents for the program I managed in closets, because there were no available rooms or had workshops crammed in the lunchroom amidst the lunchroom ladies setting up for lunch with the rattling sounds of pans and trays. This was beyond uncomfortable and frustrating, because parents could barely hear the speakers at times. It made my ability to engage parents in the school so much more difficult. The branch basement gave me the space to engage parents in a much more conducive environment. I think we often talk about equitable and quality schools, and to me, this means that every school should have an art room, it should have a health room, a library, a computer lab. These should not be concessions or negotiables to alleviate the overcrowding of students. The students at Seward deserve to have a proper space that allows them to learn and thrive. The branch did that for me, which is part of the reason why I'm standing here before you, speaking on behalf of our state rep. And I urge you to think about that as you make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dr. Jackson, do you care to make a comment?
Yeah, well, I know there are several other parents scheduled to speak today, and we'll hear from them, but we are going to offer office hours to Representative Ma and any other reps from the Seward community to speak with the board, you know, look at the, it's apparent that you've done some research on your own. We have data, and we'd like to sit down and just share it and continue this discussion. So, we'll hear from parents today, but we do commit to board hours, board office hours, along with CPS management. And Katie, who's sitting behind you in a turquoise jacket, can help set that up.
Thank you very much.
Frank, can I just ask a question? Dr. Jackson, I mean, just when they put a sentence in here, it says diverse learners will be given instruction in closets. I mean, I don't think we can just let that statement be made and say nothing about it, like, oh, that's a possibility. So, could you make a comment about that?
I'm not, I can't, well, I think what they're saying is that the school is already, the main branch is overcrowded, and if they are forced to all move back to the main building, that that's a possibility, not that it's currently occurring. And I can't speak to the truth of that or not, because it hasn't happened yet. What I will say is that we definitely need to look at the numbers that are presented here today, along with the numbers that our demographics team presented to both me and CEO Claypool, and just make sure that the facts are correct, and that's what we're committing to.
Let me ask you differently.
Mark, can I help there? It's clear to me, the real issue is that there hasn't been a final decision. That's why you're here, and that's why you're expressing yourself so eloquently. At the end of the day, neither CPS nor the board will make a decision that will result literally in activity like, something that's important is that occurring in a closet space, it's just not going to happen. And I know that's what's behind your question.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. President, our next speaker then will be Michael Brunson, please, from the CTU.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, Michael. How are you?
All right. I have two issues that I need to bring up that are extremely important. So, let me first of all, get the first one out of the way. In case you have not been listening to the news, yesterday, the Chicago Teachers Union collected votes, which were a referendum on whether or not our members had confidence in Mr. Claypool. And the numbers came in with over fourteen thousand five hundred saying no, and a mere one hundred and fifty saying yes. So, that's like, what, about ninety-nine percent no confidence. I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but I thought I'd have to start out by that. And if you're wondering why, you know, these are some of the complaints that we've had. It seems like since Mr. Claypool has been in office, he's been pushing for things like separate and unequal schooling. He's devastated our special education services. He's been targeting our experienced teacher, and firing experienced teachers. He's been going after our union activists. He is in the, he's preparing to eliminate hundreds of school clerk positions. And just this whole public deception about a day of action and this cynical lawsuit on behalf of our students to get more money, these things are sort of like outrageous to us. But I will suggest, if you do, if you are interested in getting more money, yesterday, we have put, we have been promoting or carried interest bill in the Senate. It passed the Senate, thirty-two to twenty-four. That would bring two billion dollars more into the state coffers, and we have a few more revenue ideas. I've been talking about them every time I come here, so I won't repeat that. But anyway, yes, like I say, I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but Mr. Claypool, these are the charges, and that's why we have a ninety-nine percent no confidence vote. Anyway, look, I want to read to you right now, a litany of incidents at a particular school. In the fall, a student attacked a teacher by knocking her down. A new science teacher was attacked and had things thrown at him. A student busted a glass window out of a classroom door. A fifth-grade teacher was hit repeatedly by a student. A teacher who does ancillary classes was hit by markers and other objects being thrown at her. A temporary-assigned teacher who has taken on a difficult group is constantly having issues of things thrown around the room and at her, and at each other, the students. And she has been physically assaulted by children who have been diagnosed with behavioral problems. Three times in the last month, parents have come into the school and up the stairs and physically and verbally assaulted children in the schools that are not their own. One little girl was chased out of her classroom and then slapped by a parent. A parent had to be banned from the building because of her behavior, but she keeps coming in anyway. The police have made innumerable amounts of visits to the school, and students are fighting and arguing in the halls constantly. They are extremely disrespectful to the staff. There are, and there are also, you know, sexual innuendos and things of that nature going on towards our educators. This is an intolerable situation. Our educators, my members, should not have to teach in conditions like this. I have already reported this to your security department. I've taken it to other people in the upper echelon in our strategic bargaining, and now I am bringing it to you, because this is taking place in an area that I taught in at one time. And, you know, I am concerned that things will continue to escalate, because every day, I'm hearing about new incidents. And I'm told that, you know, we're going to go out and have a meeting and talk to them. But I need you to make sure that something is done now, as soon as possible, before someone gets seriously hurt out there. So, I'll be around for a little bit longer, if you have someone that I need to talk to.
I do, obviously. And both Dr. Jackson and our security chief behind you, if you have a few moments before you leave, we need more details, more things than I think we want to say over the microphones. But we need to, what you're telling me is something that obviously every member of the board, as well as the CPS administrators, would be very concerned about, as you describe it. So, we want to talk to you before you leave. And Michael, you know our answer is not going to be, we'll look into it as seriously as you've made this. Obviously, if the facts support what you're saying, I have no reason to say that they don't. We would have to take immediate and obviously meaningful actions. Okay?
No, I believe you on that one.
Thanks, Michael. And as you leave, I don't, this is not meant to be a back-and-forth. You made your statement with respect to CEO Claypool and the union's position. And while I respect your position, I respect your process, and your outcome is your outcome. Speaking as the president of the board, and I believe on behalf of the board, we don't share those conclusions. Under Mr. Claypool's leadership, we've seen our financial gap, as dire as it remains, improve by several hundred millions of dollars in the two years, little over two years he's had this responsibility. The academics in CPS has continued to improve, as reported by Dr. Jackson. You're entitled, the union is entitled, again, I respect...
And our members.
Well, when I say the union, I mean your members. I'm not arguing with you or debating you. I respect the process. I don't agree with it, but I certainly respect it. But I want to be clear for the record, that the board not only supports CEO Claypool, but he and the senior leadership at CPS, we applaud, because at the time that we've sat here, the improvements are real, they're substantive, both financially and the academics speak for themselves. So...
You know, that's great that you're stating data and that, but our members are existentially engaged in this situation. They have to work under these conditions. And what I'm happy about is you're willing to work with me to solve this one particular problem right here.
Well, you know what, Michael, why don't we leave it at that? But speaking for the board, and if any board member had a different opinion, they are obviously are free to speak on their own behalf. We support the leadership at CPS. We support CEO Claypool and the improvements he's made. We support the academic improvements that he and Dr. Jackson have put in place. We strongly support them. I just want the record clear on that behalf.
Okay, you're going to go down with the ship. I got it.
Thank you, Mr. Brunson.
Mr. President?
All right.
Since I was discussed, can I just take one minute?
Of course.
Thank you. First of all, Michael, can you thank those hundred and fifty CTU members for me?
In my own way.
If you give me their addresses, I'll send them thank you letters. I just think, wanted to say that I think we can take some comfort in the fact that, when you're criticized from the left and the right, from CTU leadership and Governor Rauner, and they're using the same talking points, that we're probably doing something right. Because, you know, both Governor Rauner and CTU says that the cause of the fiscal crisis is our mismanagement. They both say it's not the state's fault. In fact, sometimes, WGN, Cranes have reported Karen Lewis and Jesse Sharkey saying it's unfair to ask the state for more dollars. That's their words, not mine. Not right to blame Springfield, their words, not mine. Not their fault, their words, not mine. Similarly, Governor Rauner has said that our civil rights lawsuit under the Illinois Civil Rights Act, which was created for the express purpose of targeting this type of discrimination, Governor Rauner has called it frivolous. Karen Lewis has called it fake. Karen Lewis has called it ridiculous. And Governor Rauner says local taxpayers should make up the gap, even though they've been making up the gap, and making up the gap, and making up the gap. And this board has gone to them over and over to sacrifice on behalf of our children. And CTU has been, obviously, a broken record on local taxpayers need to pay more, and more, and more. So, the similarity of the talking points is remarkable, Michael. If I didn't know better, I'd think you guys were cribbing off each other.
It's called the truth.
But I think we can, I think we can say...
It's called telling the truth.
Well, good. Well, you and the governor have that in common, and CTU and the governor are on the same page. So, I think we can take comfort when you are being criticized from left and right, from two, from Governor Rauner and CTU leadership. I think that's a sign that we are doing something right on behalf of our children and our taxpayers.
Well, don't get me wrong. I do appreciate the noble intentions of your endeavors. However, I think it would be a lot more fruitful and practical if you would work with the Chicago Teachers Union. We have a number of ideas on how to bring revenue into the schools. So, take that, keep that in mind, okay?
Thank you, Michael.
We'll meet halfway.
Thank you, Mr. Brunson. Our next speaker, please, Bill Iacola, from Local One Forty-three.
Good morning, board members.
Good morning.
I'm sure you're aware of why I'm here, but there's a reason. Today, you're voting to extend your rescission period for signed contracts between Ermark and Sedexo Companies for IFM Services that will cost the CPS in excess of a half a billion dollars. These companies have had a hundred and twenty days to have signed agreements based on their bids submitted to CPS. This extra time will only give them more time for these vendors to massage their services originally bid and find ways to cut services. This will pave the way to make more profits on money that should be directed towards the classroom. The cost of these unnecessary contracts already exceeds the cost of these services done in-house, contrary to what you're being told by your senior staff. By the way, the staff members who have never worked in school buildings and have no actual experience in what's needed in the daily maintenance of a school building. There are over a hundred and fifteen years of documented proof that services in-house are provided at a much lower cost. Anything these for-profit vendors tell you, or your non-school-based senior staff, will benefit the vendor and increase our already inflated profits. You, as a school board members, have a moral obligation to the students first, not to vendors, and not to mention, you have an obligation to the taxpayers. Given the felonies that have grown under the past contracts involving non-in-house services, one would think you would be overly cautious when awarding nearly a half a billion dollars to a profit-making vendor. I realize you have been presented with a great sales pitch from these vendors and your non-school-based senior staff on the benefits of an IFM program. The students of CPS will actually be paying for the profits made by this unnecessary outsourcing. This service has been provided efficiently and at a much lower cost by your in-house staff, and you all know that. The argument of an IFM program being cost-neutral, which is your words, is at best an excuse for a lack of management and inexperience of your senior staff. If outsourcing to huge profit-motivated corporations like Sedexo or Ermark would have generated cost savings, or even cost-neutral, again, your words, the School Finance Authority under Jerome Van Gorkum prior to school reform in nineteen ninety-five would have embraced this action. After a thorough review of this type of outsourcing, the School Finance Authority determined it to be unnecessary expense that would further the CPS debt. It was also noted that controlling the cost overruns that every privatization of public services experience would be impossible. Additionally, there's a risk of loss to the CPS equipment failures and understaffing of critical building operations personnel. My request is simple. Please do the moral and responsible action by tabling the IFM contracts and allowing further service enhancements and savings to be made by your present in-house staff. CPS will realize cost savings by not privatizing and leaving the pilot program as-is. This would result in lowering the amount needed to borrow for school operations. Let's put the students first and not the vendors. We're talking about over a half a billion-dollar outsourcing. This is one of the largest in the city of Chicago's history of outsourcing, and it's the most unnecessary. In no way would a private vendor, whose main goal is to make a profit, be caring about the services. It's evident in Ermark, I know you'll all disagree, the schools are dirty. You guys are here. I know you visit schools. They get blitz cleaned before you get there, believe me. They're filthy, filthy, dirty. What do you think's going to happen when the engineers are privatized? Even though it's going to be the same people, we'll be working for a vendor who makes a profit, not loyal to you, not loyal to you. You did it in the Park District, it didn't work. It's not going to work here. I've been here forty-three years. I know the schools better than anybody up here on how to operate them. This is not... This is not working. Come to Lincoln Park, see how filthy. I wouldn't send anybody there anymore. It used to be a beautiful school. My principal's fed up. He won't even call anymore and complain. It's not the janitor's fault. There's only eight or nine people there when we just have 14. Can't clean the same building. It's impossible. I'm just asking you, I've asked you several times to look this over. You approved it back in February. They had 120 days. Why they can't sign a contract is because they realize they can't make the big profits unless they cut the services, and your staff is negotiating this with them. Table the thing. Let's talk. We can save you a lot more money. We know the ways to do it. I know personally how to save you money. You don't have to borrow all that money. I'm here for you. We'll get the schools clean, we'll have the kids in a clean environment. That's what they deserve. They deserve a clean environment. Our bathrooms are filthy. I wouldn't let, I don't want any of you to see them. They're dirty. But if you do come, they'll know ahead of time, believe me, and they'll be there with 20 people. That's what they do. That's what they used to do when the mayor would go to schools. So, I appreciate your concern. I mean no disrespect. I'm here as a support to you. I really mean that. I haven't been with you for 43 years for nothing. I do know the operation of the buildings. I know the best way to do it. I can work as a partner with your department that we have for years and years on how to keep these buildings up. You have an opportunity now. The 120 days passed. You don't have to do anything. You don't have to approve the general counsel's request to extend this. Please reconsider this. As you know, I'm always available, and I'll talk to you. Again, like I said, I mean no disrespect to anybody. It's just something I know in my heart that we can do to provide a better environment for the students so the education process can get on and do a better job. And I appreciate, as always, your time to let me speak. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Iacolo.
Thank you.
Before you start, Alfonso, would you come to the mic?
Good morning. Just a couple of questions.
Of course.
We use the word revenue neutral. The implication from the last presenter, speaker, I should say, is that, in fact, there's a tremendous incremental increase in expense, one. Two, the schools are not only less clean, the words we used were filthy. Many of the board members have, in fact, visited many of the schools, and frankly, we see a different condition. The allegation is they're cleaning it up when we're there, and they let it go when we're not. And the third point, I know you've done surveys of principals. I want you succinctly to address these three issues.
Of course. In the first issue that you brought up around revenue neutral, it is absolutely revenue neutral. The amount of money that we'll be spending with these services is significantly less than it was in 2012, 2010. We have data to back that up, which we shared with everyone, including the union and other representatives. So, it is cost-neutral. Going on to the second point, I absolutely emphatically deny that we ever go to the schools that you go to and do some sort of a spot or swat clean before you get there. That is simply not true. When you go to the schools, they are where they are. I visit schools on a weekly basis. I have over 25 years in operations. Also, I have a lot of experience within this field. And I can tell you that we have done an excellent job in upkeeping the schools. It is not filthy, and I simply need to see the data, because I don't have the data, I have the data opposite. The schools are clean, and the bathrooms are not filthy. I'm sorry, I have to just back that up, because I care a lot about the children, and it's important to me, the parents here know that I care about them, and that it's not the case. I'm sorry, the third point?
Any other question for Alfonso? Thank you, Alfonso.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will now proceed with the speakers list. Our first speakers, please, will be Speaker Number One, Su Lan Moi, followed by Speaker Number Seven, C.W. As they approach the podium, we will then call Speaker Number Two, please, Vansil Murdock, followed by Speaker Number Three, Ricardo Torres. Please state your name.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Su Lan Moi. And I'm a retired Chicago public school teacher. I'm also proud of the fact that I am a product of the Chicago Public Schools, having attended Bateman Elementary School and graduated from Roosevelt High School in Albany Park. In my teaching career of more than 30 years, I taught upper-grade Cantonese bilingual students and worked with their parents in the bilingual advisory program. My first school assignment was John C. Hain School in Chinatown. After 15 years, I transferred to Robert Healy School in Bridgeport as more of the Chinese immigrant population moved southward. Education is very important to immigrants. I saw so many parents struggle in low-paying jobs, but they had the hope that their children would succeed through education and hard work. Every September, at the beginning of their eighth grade year, students, parents, teachers, and counselors would begin the process of finding a good high school for the students to attend. This was especially stressful for Chinese families, as there are no CPS high schools in the Chinatown and Bridgeport areas. When I started teaching in the 70s, many of my students traveled close to Midway Airport to attend Bogan High School at 79th and Pulaski, and Curie High School at Archer and Pulaski. By the time that I retired, fewer students attended Bogan and Curie, with more students attending Kelly High School. Some travel up north to Lakeview and other high schools. I am thankful that those schools, even though they are not close to Chinatown, opened their doors to provide students from Chinatown with the opportunity to get a good education. I serve on the board of the Chinese-American Museum of Chicago in Chinatown. Often, I see many former-
Ms. Moi, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Yes, okay. Who are now marrying and raising their own students. They're still challenged with the task of finding a good high school for their children. I encourage the Board of Education and the Chicago Public Schools to continue exploring options for a high school to serve the Chinatown and Bridgeport communities. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Moi. And our next speaker, please, Mr. Chan.
Good morning. My name is C.W. Chan. Chinatown recently completed a comprehensive community vision plan, which highlighted assets to high school education as a key community agenda item that led us to the recent frequent activities before the Board of Education and CPS. But our high school advocacy actually dated much further back for decades. I hope the community's collective passion and solidarity and a fact-based advocacy approach are evident of our cumulative experience and the verification of the merit of our cause. Since our most recent relaunch of the high school campaign, we have had frequent contacts and meetings with both members and administrators of CPS. We characterize these interactions as mutually responsive. When we presented data supporting the need for Chinatown High School, CPS responded by conducting an internal study to verify the community's assertion. When CPS asked about the community's vision of what a Chinatown High School should be like, we immediately launched and completed a survey with over 800 respondents, just a few examples. Last week, many of us were in Springfield lobbying for funding for immigrant services. We saw CPS administrators and students also there rallying for equitable funding for CPS. We commend and support your effort on behalf of the Chicago parents and children. We also recognize public education as a key component of any immigrant integration initiatives. In the face of your everyday challenges, we urge you not to let up on your effort to address the long-term equitable assets to save and quality education for all, and particularly the South Side neighborhoods of the city of Chicago. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chan. Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker, please, Vansil Murdock, last call. Moving on to the next speaker, please, Ricardo Torres.
Good morning, board members.
Good morning.
My name is Ricardo Torres, and I come today speaking as a father. I have lived in the Northwest Side my entire life. I'm a product of CPS and graduated from Kelvin Park High School. My family and I currently live on the Northwest Side. I have two kids. My oldest is proudly serving in the U.S. Air Force, and my youngest is a sophomore at ITW Spear Academy. When my daughter was deciding on a high school, my wife and I took her all over the city to check out several options for her, despite the fact that ITW wouldn't provide cafeteria and that she would be exposed to rigorous college preparatorial classes, as well as a discipline-based environment. It wouldn't also offer as many art programs as she liked and would require more out of her than the other schools. She knew that the growth she was seeing herself at ITW was worth it. And of course, I did as any father would, and I supported her decision 100%. My daughter stepped up to the plate, and has grown into an amazing, mature young lady with a work ethic that I'm so confident that she will succeed in life. One of my proudest moments as a parent was when she was competing at a school event one day. My daughter was running her heart hard, tired, and sweaty, and she was giving it all she had that day. I approached her as any father would to make sure she was all right. She looked at me and said, "Bobby, I might not come in first, but I'm never going to be the first to quit." That may, that day, my heart swelled and my eyes started to sweat of how proud I was of her. So, today, I come before you, and I ask that you please take a moment to look over the document that I have provided to you in regards to the challenges that the kids at ITW Spear Academy are up against for the proposed expansion of the school. The expansion proposed is for an addition that will provide a cafeteria, classroom, and additional educational resources that all the kids and the community can benefit from in many ways.
Mr. Torres?
And none of the articles provided states the true purpose of the expansion. In the documents provided, I have also highlighted several quotes in those articles, as I stood up late last night trying to make sense of it all. I was truly offended and bothered on how they identify the kids as resources and how they claim that the charter schools are taking the kids away from CPS. I would like to let it be known, I have never given my child away to anyone to claim as their own or as assets of any type for financial benefits. I also ask that you please acknowledge that in some, that in none of the meetings that my wife and I have attended, knowing the articles that we have read, have asked the most important questions. How are the kids performing at ITW Spear Academy? How is, how is the school ranked among the other schools in the community? Please, how do the kids feel about the school? I strongly feel that-
Mr. Torres, we all have this, and I see the last part you want to read. I understand what you're asking, okay?
Please.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Torres.
I'm speaking as a father.
I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speakers, please. Speaker Number Four, Jennifer Sobel, followed by Speaker Eighteen, Audrey Johnson, followed by Speaker Number Five, Mary Hughes, and then Speaker Number Six, Cesar Dominguez. Please state your name.
Jennifer Sobel. I'm a mother of a kindergartner at the National Teachers Academy, a Level One, Title One school that serves more than 700 pre-K through eighth grade students in the near South Side at 55 West Sirmac. I'm proud to be a part of this thriving school that offers robust academics, arts, and after-school programs. At NTA, academic achievement is on the rise. We are on track to receive a Level One-plus status next year, and we achieved our current Level One status based solely on the hard work and test scores of our neighborhood students. We are extremely proud that all of our eighth graders, every single one, was accepted to a Level One or Level One-plus high school for next fall. Attendance at NTA is solid. We have maintained 95% attendance, or better, for three consecutive years. And NTA's culture is strong. NTA's been rated well-organized by the My Voice My School survey since 2015. In short, NTA is a CPS success story. It was therefore a huge blow to our NTA school community when we learned in April of this year of a CPS proposal to expand the attendance boundary of the South Loop Elementary School at our expense. Such a shift would leave only seven students, seven, residing within NTA's new attendance boundaries, and would threaten the very existence of our school by creating a situation of under-enrollment that does not currently exist. At our town hall, which we held last night, over 100 members of our community gathered to say one thing: Do not close NTA. The near South Side is gaining population at an extraordinary rate and needs an investment into both of our local elementary schools. We ask that you not move NTA's boundaries. And if CPS wants to build a high school for the new South Side, and for the South Loop, it can and must find a way to do so that does not destroy NTA's community. We hope to continue to collaborate with Dr. Jackson to plan for the future so that both NTA and South Loop Elementary School can continue to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sobel. Thank you for your comments. And our next speaker, please, Ms. Johnson.
Good morning. Good morning, board. My name is Audrey Johnson. I'm actually a parent in, this is hard for me, because I don't want y'all to do the borderline. I'm a parent from National Teachers Academy. I have children, 10 there, three already graduated, honor students. Now, two, one of 10, Wendell Phillips, honor student. Just won third place, for the second year in the City YA USL Science Fair. Just scored 1,000 on the SAT test. She come from National Teachers Academy. I was born and raised in the community. This is so hard for me, because I love NTA. We are family, we are community. Don't do the borderline. You take so much from us. They already displaced us from the neighborhood, took us from Williams School, that was displaced, tore our homes down. It was hard for our students. I've been there over 40 years. It's hard. Our kids is having it hard, just knowing that they got to change another school. They come from pre-K. That's their family. Let's be together. Stop the segregation, because that's what it all lead to. Right? South Loop, just join us. The school is big enough. They building a new school, they got 800, put them in there. Don't take it away from us. Got too much going on in the city already. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Our next speaker, please, Mary Hughes.
Hello, my name is Mary Hughes. I am the Director of the 19th Ward Parents for Special Education, and I have a child with autism in the cluster program at the Ag School. The Ag School has the largest number of cluster classrooms of any high school in the city of Chicago, with six classrooms serving 72 students. These students thrive on continuity, familiarity, stability, and routine, and any disruption to that can lead to the dysregulation and an inability to learn. I assert that CPS is trying to cut special ed costs by holding ESY for Ag School students at a non-Ag School location. Last summer, when ESY was held at the Ag School, participation was almost 100%, ran without a hitch, and with lovely Mount Greenwood Park adjacent to the Ag, students engaged in meaningful daily outdoor learning in a safe environment with full supports. Comparatively, the last time ESY for Ag students was held at a non-Ag School location, participation for Ag School students dropped to less than 30%, and students who did attend rarely left the building, were left without their IEP mandated communication devices, access to technology, programs, and supports. In addition, in the neighborhood where CPS has scheduled ESY for CHAS students, there have been 56 incidents of violent crime in the last 90 days, including an armed assault with a handgun right in front of the school. Comparatively, in the same timeframe, there were two incidents of violent crime in the Ag School neighborhood. If you're committed to full participation for Ag School students in ESY this summer, you have the power to set aside the flimsy reasons I have heard for setting it elsewhere and schedule it at the Ag. This simply requires the will to make it work. I ask you to relocate ESY for Summer 2017 for Network 10 to the Ag, and reopen the ESY teacher application window, so the teachers who would have applied for ESY had ESY been scheduled at the Ag have that opportunity. I also want to say that despite direct communication-
Ms. Hughes, can you please conclude?
Yes. These decisions are being made with no input from the teachers and parents who know our children. That is unacceptable. We want to keep our kids housed in a safe environment where they can actually learn- We want to keep our kids housed in a safe environment where they can actually learn something.
Ms. Hughes.
It takes a full two weeks to acclimate to a new location. ESY is four weeks. It makes no sense to hold it elsewhere. Thank you.
Before the next speaker comes, Dr. Jackson, do you want to comment?
Just a few things. I know that Ms. Hughes raised these concerns with-
Ms. Hughes, you're not required to respond. You're not required to respond.
I understand.
Well, then, you need to take your seat. Thank you so much. Before Dr. Jackson comments, you've had your time. Please allow the next speaker to come. And Dr. Jackson, you have the floor for a moment.
Thank you, sir. Just for one quick second, I know she's been in contact with the Office of Diverse Learners and I know that the excuses may appear to be flimsy in your estimation, but it is CPS protocol that when construction, which is scheduled to happen at Chicago Ag, which is something that people come down to board meetings month after month begging for, we do relocate students to another site and so-
If you're not going to let Dr. Jackson complete her comments, you need to take your seat, please, please. Dr. Jackson-
Yeah, I just want to restate our protocol that when a school is a construction site, it is in the best interest of the students that they not attend that school and that's simply what this is. I know Ms. Hughes has a concern with the community in which the Network 10 students will be served for ESY, but we believe it is the best site, it is accessible to students, which many of our students in ESY need accessibility. It has air conditioning, it has all of the amenities that are needed to provide a high-quality education in a comfortable environment during the summer months.
And Dr. Jackson, you really have to, you have to sit down, please. Dr. Jackson, I would very much, Dr. Jackson, I think what the board is hearing, obviously it'd be something we too would be concerned with, particularly if there's any possibility that students are put in a worse environment, which is why I wanted you to respond. I'm particularly concerned, I want to make sure that the appropriate community input and input from the people who are most affected is taking place. Is this a final decision or is this decision still under review?
This is a final decision. I think it's important to note that the district has a protocol for identifying summer school sites as well as ESY sites and I think feedback is important, but I also think it's inappropriate that every single decision has to be vetted through different community groups, parents, et cetera. If we think that the site that's currently identified as a Network 10 site is unfit for ESY, we would also be acknowledging that it's unfit for regular school, which we do not agree with. So I think the decision has been made and I'm very comfortable with the decision that we've made.
Thank you.
They are not hosting summer school there. The district summer school, if the principal allows other kids in, you need to talk to the principal, but there's no summer school there.
All right. Thank you very much. Your concerns, I take it they're real. We heard the response from the person or the people who are responsible to make these decisions. This is not an issue that requires board action, but it is something that we need to understand. And I don't know that there'll be a different outcome. I personally will talk a bit more to Dr. Jackson to get a fuller understanding.
Frank.
Thank you.
I just want to say that policy is not new. It's been the standing policy that whenever construction is going on in the building, students would have to be moved for the safety of the students, which is priority.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much. I do appreciate the legitimacy of your concerns. I also understand that we have policy and protocol that we have to adhere to and people who know more about this than I, particularly Dr. Heinz who just spoke, I have the utmost confidence in, as well as Dr. Jackson. We don't do things to put children in a worse situation, but I don't dismiss your concerns.
Thank you, Mr. President. We proceed with our next speaker, Mr. Dominguez.
Good afternoon, board members. My name is Cesar Dominguez. I am the Data Strategy Manager at the Illinois Network of Charter Schools. As we near the end of the school year, I want to take a minute and highlight just how far we have come as a district when measured by student outcomes, specifically when measured by graduation rates. In 1999, only 43 out of every 100 CPS first-time freshmen were graduating high school in four years. Only 39% of African-American students and 44% of Latino students were graduating within four years. We were failing across the board. Fast forward to today and we see a tale of two cities. Graduation rate in 2016 was 73.5%. Our Black and Latino students were graduating at 67% and 77% rates respectively. And most importantly, these increases cannot be attributed to lowered standards. In fact, the average ACT score in CPS has gone up from 16.2 in 2001 to a record 18.4 in 2016. Outcomes have never been higher than they are today and the district should be applauded. Though many factors have contributed to this, we firmly believe charter schools, the expansion of charter schools is among them. In 1999, charter schools enrolled 3% of all high school students. Today, they enroll 25%. Throughout that time, charter schools have consistently graduated at higher rates. For example, since 2011, charters have cumulatively graduated 69% of first-time freshmen within four years. That is 5% higher than district-run schools and 12% higher than non-selective district-run schools, which are our closest counterparts. Thus, I encourage all of us in the room to keep this in mind as we confront the very real and difficult challenges we face today. Continuing this academic progress depends greatly on how we overcome these fiscal challenges and overcoming these fiscal challenges depends greatly on how well we work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dominguez.
I actually very much appreciate your comment with respect to the district and the academic achievements that have taken place. I think people will debate whether it's exclusively related to charter schools. There'll be a lot of other people who will raise their hand and take credit for that and I think there's room for a lot of people to take credit for it. At the end of the day, the district has improved notably and thank you for making that clear in your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms.- Thank you, Mr. President.
If you're going to speak and you're scheduled to speak, we'd love to hear from you.
Thank you. Our next speakers will be speaker number eight, please, Jose Alonso, speaker 13, Alma Sigla, 16, Angelis Cruz Rios, and speaker 41, Juanita Ramirez.
Good morning. My name is Jose Alonso and I am a Seward alumni. I'm here once again to ask you to save the Seward branch. This is the third time that we have come before you this year to ask for your intervention. Our requests appear to have been ignored thus far and so we are here once again. Since CPS has now reversed its decision, we have continued to inform and gather people behind this effort. A recent example of one such gathering was the Dia del Niño celebration that we held last month. Approximately 200 parents, children, residents, the aldermen, and community leaders gathered to celebrate our children. We marched several blocks and told our story to the media. We also gave the community an opportunity to write messages to the CPS board and create posters to explain the impact of the branch closing on our children's education. The children marched, chanted "Don't close the branch" and waved powerful posters. One read, "Invest in my future, I matter." Other posters read, "Education is a right, don't close the branch, it is not just, and education matters." Getting rid of classrooms for art, technology, and the library tells our children that you do not want to invest in their future. Closing the branch and thus creating overcrowded and split classrooms tells our children that they do not matter. Giving instruction to diverse learners in actual closets tells our children that education is not a right. Trying to balance the budget on the backs of Latino immigrant children from back of the yards, a community that is in dire, dire need of safe spaces-
Do you mind if I interrupt you for one moment?
Yes, please.
You'll get your extra time back. You made the same statement someone else made earlier about diverse learners getting instruction. You literally said "a closet," not "a closet space," and "a closet." Is that correct?
That is correct.
And you've got factual proof that that takes place?
Doesn't take place, right, I'm saying that if it's closed, that's what will happen.
I got you. Okay, I just wanted to be clear on that.
There is a testimony today from somebody who actually had instruction in a closet when she was at Seward as a child, so-
Thank you.
Sorry, I forgot where I left off. Dire need of safe spaces, resources, and investment, especially now, is a tremendous injustice. What is especially egregious is the fact that closing the branch will have a microscopic impact on CPS's current budget woes. Closing the branch isn't balancing anything. It's nothing for CPS, but keeping the branch open means so much for the education and future of our children. It means dignified learning spaces, feeling supported, and having the same learning opportunities and resources as other CPS students across the city. So once again, we ask you to invest in our children's future, show them that they matter, and continue to commit to keeping the Seward branch open. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Alonso.
Thank you.
Speaker Alma Sigla.
Good afternoon. My name is Alma Sigla and I'm a leader in the Back of the Yards neighborhood. And I have two children and they wear to Seward Academy. And I'm here from Padres Preocupados por una Educación de Calidad. Parents concerned about quality education. The last month at Seward School, we had a Children's Day event. At this event, we asked children to write letters expressing their feelings about closing the Seward branch. And the letters are in the table and I hope that you read it. Thank you. They're borrowed of education. My name is Denise. I don't think that closing the branch will be better for our education. Instead, I think I will make it worse. My name is Evelyn. Please don't close the branch. If you close the branch, the library, the art class, and the computer class will close. The library has many books for the students and the students like to read books. My name is Alanise and I'm a seventh grade. I know you want to close the building because there is no money to continue paying for it. But honestly, if you close the branch, that will complicate things a bit. Please, we ask you, from the bottom of our hearts, do not close the building. My name is Fernando. If you close the branch, what will happen? It's that my two little brothers will not be able to learn like I was able to learn when I was their ages. Please do not close the branch. My name is Daniela and I need the library, art class, computer class. I know that you want to close the branch, but that is not just because we want to learn, but you are taking away the opportunity. If you want to have a library, computer class, and the art class, how we will learn? My name is Marisol and I need to library, art class, technology to succeed in my future, to learn. I love my school. My name is Maria. I love to learn-
Ms. Sigla.
And this is where, I'm sorry.
Thank you for your comments.
They've given me the entire list of letters here.
Ask for your support and then close the branch.
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know, they've given me the entire list here. It's about four or five inches deep and we will look at them.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next speaker is Angelis Cruz Rios, please.
Estimados presentes de la junta de educación de CPS, mi nombre es Ángeles Cruz. Soy mamá de cuatro niños y estoy preocupada por la sucursal de Seward. Si la cierran o reducen los salones y trasladan a todos los estudiantes de la sucursal al edificio principal, estaría sobrepoblada Seward. Perderían los salones de arte, computación, salud, biblioteca, y nuestras escuelas se vería afectadas en la aplicación del programa IB negativamente. También la sobrepoblación afectaría a los estudiantes. Quien serían colocados en un salón de dos grados y los estudiantes de aprendizajes diversos como los niños especiales, les darían instrucción en guardarropa o closet. Es triste que tengan que pasar esto nuestros niños y una gran vergüenza para los políticos. Señores, nuestros niños son nuestro futuro, el futuro de los Estados Unidos y sobre todo de Chicago. No les cortemos sus salas a la educación. Ayudemoslos juntos para que sean el gran orgullo de Chicago. Nuestros hijos son muy inteligentes y tienen un gran potencial. Solo requieren una pequeña pulida y tenemos que darle las herramientas, su educación, para que construyan un gran futuro. Les imploro que piensen muy bien en su decisión sobre la sucursal. Nuestra comunidad de Back of the Yards no quiere armas, quiere herramientas y las herramientas para nuestros hijos son los libros. Mire estos. We are asking for your commitment to help us helping the branch open.
Thank you, Ms. Rios.
I'm going to interpret. Dear Board of Education, my name is Ángeles Cruz. I am a mother of four children. I am very concerned about the Seward branch. If you close the branch or reduce the classrooms and move all of the students from the branch to the main building, Seward will be overcrowded. Seward will lose the classrooms dedicated to art, technology, health, and the library. Our school's application for IB certification will also be affected negatively. Also, overcrowding will affect the students from different grades who will be put in split classrooms. Diverse learners, like students who require special education, will also be affected because they will be taught in closets. It is sad that our students have to go through this and it is an embarrassment for our political leaders. Board members, our children are our future, the future of the United States, and most importantly, the future of Chicago. Let's not cut off the wings that education provides. Let's help them together so that they can be the pride of Chicago. Our children are very intelligent and have great potential. They only need a small polish. We have to give them tools, in this case, an education, so that they can construct an amazing future. I implore that you think hard about the decision regarding the Seward branch. Our community in the Back of the Yards does not want guns. We want the tools for our children and the tools are books. She showed the book. We are asking for your commitment to help us keeping the branch open. Thank you.
All right, is everyone here a parent of a- Tell me again, are you representing what?
Seward school.
No, but are you parents? Are you community activists? I'm sorry?
A mixture.
A mixture. How many parents?
Parents, raise your hand.
Parents of students at school? Okay, thank you very much. It's very impressive.
Mr. President, there is another parent that noted Seward as an organization or school, but then there are also for other community members on the same issue. So the next speaker will be Juanita Ramirez, please.
Hello. We are asking for reasonable accommodation of time for the speaker. She is one of the alums that used to receive classes in the closet, so it is a touchy feeling, so it might take her a little bit of time.
Well, we obviously want to be reasonable. But before you get started though, Dr. Jackson, is there a final decision on Seward?
No, this was the same one that Representative Ma brought up. So we are committed to having the office hours and going over the data with them. So I think Katie's working on getting that set up.
Please continue.
I'm sorry. Hola. Mucho gusto. Mi nombre es Juanita. Yo soy madre de una estudiante en la escuela y ex alumna de la Seward. Estoy muy decepcionada de que vayan a cerrar la escuela. Lo que CPS va a hacer es malo, no solo para mi hija sino para otros niños. Yo me recuerdo hace años atrás cuando yo era estudiante de la Seward, que mis clases estaban muy sobrepobladas y los maestros tenían mucho dificultades en enseñar a todos los estudiantes. En ese tiempo tomaban recursos de sobrepoblación u ubicar a los estudiantes en closets, de los cuales me medían más menos de cuatro a cuatro pies de medida. So sorry. Y el propósito para cerrar la sucursal continúa. Temo que pasaría lo mismo que yo pasé en ese tiempo. No se siente bonito tomar clases en un closet. Nuestros hijos y maestros necesitan nuestro apoyo de todo para que nos pase esta tragedia. Lo imploro que se- lo único en educación de nuestros niños y jóvenes. Les imploro que lo piensen muy bien en su decisión sobre la sucursal. We are asking for your commitment to help us in keeping our branch open. Gracias. Gracias.
Is this a situation where there’s... Were you saying that... Is it your child?
Yes.
Let me just ask...
This was her experience. I’m gonna go ahead and read it in English.
That she received services in a closet?
When she was an alumni or a lumet.
How long ago?
¿Hace cuánto tiempo fue?
Long time ago.
Long time ago. Okay, not the case today.
No.
But you’re afraid that if we do this, it could lead to that. Just want to be clear. It’s not happening today, but you’re concerned it could happen. Okay.
Hello, my name is Juanita Ramirez. I am the mother of one of the students in the school and an alumni of Seward. I am very disappointed that the Seward Branch will be closed in the future. The CPS has planned to do this... What CPS has planned to do is very bad, not only for my daughter, but all of the students. I remember many years ago when I was a student in Seward. My classrooms were very overcrowded, and the teachers had a very hard time teaching all of the students. At this time, they use as a resource for the overcrowding to place students in closets, of which they measure no more than 4 by 4 feet of measurements. If the process to close the branch continues, I am afraid that this will happen, just like it did to me when I was a student. It does not feel good to be taking classes in a closet. Our students and teachers need everyone’s support so this tragedy does not happen. The only thing that will damage will be the education of our children and youth. I beg you to please think very carefully about your decision in regards to the branch. We are asking for your commitment to help us in keeping the branch open. Thank you.
I want to be really clear here. One, personally, as a board member, but speaking on behalf of the board, I’m always very, very frankly impressed when the community that has strong views show up for us and express those views. On the other hand, the concern that you have has not occurred. Earlier in another conversation, I think we made it very clear that neither the CPS administration nor the Board of Education that would have to vote on an issue like this, we would never support a situation where kids ended up in a closet. That’s all I could say. I don’t know that that answers your broader questions, but that result would be a completely unacceptable result for CEO Claypool and obviously for Dr. Jackson. Nevertheless, your concerns will be addressed. There’s no final decision. There will be a great deal of opportunity for community input and discussion. I don’t know what the actual outcome would be at this stage. All I can say, and I think whatever our board members asked a question directly now about half hour ago, and there’s no situation where this board would be approving an outcome that would put kids in a 4 by 4 closet. I don’t know what else to say to that. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. President. I’ll move on to the next group of speakers from Tarkington School of Excellence, and they have designated speakers. Speaker number nine, please, Dylan Moreno, and speaker number 51, Aparicio Catalina. Please state your name.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Dylan Moreno. I am a former student from Tarkington School of Excellence. I graduated there back in 2011. I am currently a student at Daly College studying psychology. I’m here to speak on behalf of Delegate Mr. Joseph Dunlap, who has been a teacher at Tarkington since it opened back in 2005. He has always advocated for students and teachers. Beyond helping us to strive for academic excellence, he also creates programs that help empower us to be productive citizens in our communities. Therefore, I find it absolutely unacceptable that he is being targeted for removal. His ratings have been systematically lowered over the last several years in an effort to force him out. He is the last black teacher at Tarkington, and none have been hired since 2006. This situation reeks of racism and retaliation. He is the kind of teacher you should be trying to keep, not push out. Therefore, I demand that you do something to end these attacks and restore him to his self-contained teaching position. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moreno. And our next speaker, please, Aparicio Catalina.
Buenos días a todos. Mi nombre es Catalina Aparicio, y tengo a bien decir, en esta mañana, algunas palabras sobre la Escuela Tarkington School of Excellence, a la cual asisten mis tres hijas. Ellas se encuentran en los grados kinder, tercero, y sexto grado. Hace casi cuatro años que llegué a la ciudad de Chicago, y una de mis mayores preocupaciones era, ¿en qué escuela yo podría escribir a mis hijas? Gracias a mi padre celestial, eso no fue tan difícil, y tuvimos la bendición de tener una escuela en nuestro vecindario. Para mí, la mejor herencia que podemos dejar a nuestros hijos es una buena educación, educación de calidad. Con ello tendrán las armas para luchar en la vida. A continuación, diré una frase que escuché mientras estudiaba acerca de Thomas Jefferson. La razón y el conocimiento pueden influir en el comportamiento humano. El mundo puede llegar a ser mejor, y las vidas de la gente pueden verse mejoradas a través del estudio. Por lo tanto, debo decir que mis hijas se encuentran dentro de una de las escuelas donde ellas han sobresalido y no han tenido problemas para desarrollarse académicamente. Yo, como madre de familia, hago mi parte, envolviéndome en todas las actividades escolares posibles. Soy presidenta del PAC, y cada vez que existe algún problema con mis hijas, me dirijo a la persona correspondiente, ya sea su maestra, personal de la escuela, o en casos especiales con la directora. Para apoyar la educación de nuestros hijos, como brindándoles las herramientas necesarias para lograrlo, ellos serán unos buenos líderes en un futuro. Pero eso no será posible si siguen recortando el presupuesto para cada de nuestras escuelas públicas de Chicago, si siguen despidiendo maestros excelentes de buenas escuelas, de nuestras escuelas con muchos años de experiencia, si siguen ignorando peticiones de cada una de las personas que toman el tiempo para venir a este lugar y exponer sus preocupaciones. Hagamos nuestro trabajo y no nos confiamos de nuestra propia prudencia. Antes bien, oremos para recibir la guía del todo poderoso para actuar conforme a su voluntad. Muchas gracias y que tengan un buen día.
Catalina Aparicio from Tarkington. I have three daughters at the school, attending kinder, 3rd, and 6th grade. When I arrived to the city four years ago, my main concern was finding the right school. Thanks God, that wasn’t difficult, because we are blessed to have that school in our own neighborhood. A good quality education is the best inheritance. When I was studying at Thomas Jefferson, I read the following. Reason and knowledge influence human behavior. The world and people’s life can be better through a good education. That’s why my daughters have excelled at the school. They don’t have problems. As a mother, I try to be very involved as possible. I preside the PAC. And every time I have a problem, I talk to the teachers, I talk to the staff, and Principal Reisner. So, if we work together, supporting our children, they will be leaders tomorrow. But that won’t be possible if we keep... If you CPS keep cutting budget, firing excellent teachers, and ignoring our petitions. So, that’s why I’m here asking you, let’s do our job, and thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President. And our next speaker will be speaker number 10, please, Andrea Tolzmann, followed by speaker number 11, Erica Boxley. Speaker number 12, Jackie Baez.
Hello, my name is Andrea Tolzmann, and I’m a parent and a LSE member at Pulaski. I am an involved parent at my kid’s school, and I’m committed to ensuring that they receive a great education. I am a product of public schools, and I come from a family of public educators, and I attend these board meetings, and I stay informed about decisions in CPS that affect my children and all CPS students. I advocate for education issues in Springfield and in Chicago. I do everything in my power to improve education in Illinois. But many parents in Chicago are done. They are done struggling to ensure that their kids get into good schools. They are done playing the lottery that is CPS’s access enrollment school choice system. They are done fighting for schools that are not adequately or equitably funded. Sick of their children being treated like second-class citizens, they’re leaving CPS and leaving Chicago. I personally know 11 families that will be leaving Chicago or Illinois this summer, and their number-one reason is uncertainty about schools. I know I come here month after month, and I ask questions, but I get no answers or information. So, let’s talk about accountability. This board is not accountable to the students or the taxpayers of Chicago, only to the mayor. For years, we have been asking for this board for your long-term plans to adequately fund our schools. We have been asking you to share your long-term sustainability plans and to work with the mayor and the aldermen to come up with new revenue systems, new revenue streams, and money for this from the city coffers. We have asked you for your backup plans in case the Plan As don’t work, but we never get answers, just uncertainty, chaos, and crisis. Now, there’s transparency. This year, CEO Claypool laid out a plan for the civil rights lawsuit against Governor Rauner and other government officials. This dates back to the spring of 2016. In this plan, he touted the law firm of Jenner and Block for giving CPS a discounted rate for legal services. What failed to be mentioned publicly, though, was that this discounted rate was only provided to CPS if the district lost the case. But if the district did receive financial relief, CPS would have to pay the firm, and I quote, “The difference between the discounted rates set forth above and Jenner’s normal hourly rates.” I know the terms of this engagement have since changed, but not until CPS had paid Jenner and Block nearly $200,000...
Ms. Tolzmann.
And definitely... I’ll be wrapping up soon. And definitely not before this board voted to approve this deal. Jenner and Block was paid to lose, but it would have been paid more to win this case. Not a bad deal unless you’re a CPS student. So, since you work for the mayor, please tell him goodbye on behalf of the many families who are done with CPS in Chicago. Please tell him that this exodus from Chicago will continue to negatively affect school enrollment, weaken the local economy, and will ultimately lead to lower housing values across the city, because people with children are running away from Chicago public schools. You know as well as I do that strong cities and vibrant communities are built on adequately funded schools.
Thank you, Ms. Tolzmann.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, please.
Hi, Board. My name is Erica Boxley, and my daughter Jasmine attends Gary Comer College Prep Middle School and Noble School. She is currently graduating 8th grade this year and will be heading over to Gary Comer College Prep High School. The time she has spent at Gary Comer was very good for my daughter. They exposed her to so many opportunities that I wouldn’t have the time to list them all. The teachers and even the office staff are invested in each and every child. The care that they take to make sure that every child has what they need, knowing when they have any bad day keeps them in school. The pride that the teachers have in their profession shows. They are able to produce amazing results in their students. I am proud to look at my daughter and see how much she’s grown since being at Gary Comer. Her attitude, academic performance, has completely transformed. She takes pride in her work and has grown into a teenager that is focused on her responsibilities and completing tasks. Noble teachers have helped my daughter reach her academic goals, and I believe that every parent deserves the right to send their child to an amazing school like Noble Network School. I am very grateful for everything that they do for my students that I have become one of their parent advocates. I volunteer at the school almost weekly, and I even went to Springfield a couple weeks ago to talk to... Leters, I’m sorry, missed that word up, about supporting charter schools like Gary Comer. That is how much this school means to my family. I am coming here to ask for fair funding for our school. Schools like Gary Comer can’t continue to do this amazing work without fair funding. When you are making decisions about funding, remember you are making a decision about my Jasmine. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Boxley. And our next speaker, please, Jackie Baez. As she approaches the microphone, Mr. President, I would like to note that there are additional speakers from the Seward community that wish to address the board. So, I will call them, and they will be speaker number 14, Evelyn Acevedria, speaker 26, Veronica Graciela, speaker 20, Lorena Lopez, and speaker 38, Consuelo Martinez. Ms. Baez?
Hi, my name is Jacqueline Baez. Good afternoon. I have twins, John and Janice, currently 11 years old, assisting CICS West-Belden. I do have all their three childrens already grown up. My first three childrens went to public school. As you already know, CICS is a charter school. With that said, that means I have experienced both systems. So, why I decided to send my twins to a charter school and not a public school? When my first three childrens attended public school, they were struggling with the classes due to the amount of childrens in the classroom. Part of the answer rests in the experience and struggles my family already had with public school system. Chicago public school never adapted to their needs. My first daughter was the only one to graduate from Lane Tech High School. Both of my boys, really smart kids, could not finish high school in a regular classroom setting. They both attended Lincoln Challenge, a five-and-a-half-month program, and at the age of 16, respectively, both obtained their GD. So, why I decided to send my twins to a charter school and not a public school? CICS West-Belden has proven to be effective in the education and discipline my twins are receiving today. CICS West-Belden adapted to my twins’ need and found ways they can bring out their potentials. Their grades and test scores don’t lie. You see, when you have a joint system at home and at school that motivates you, challenges you, and pushes you to give the best of you, you create successful individuals in life. I am grateful for the encouragement and guidance that CICS West-Belden offer my twins every day, and I’m proud to belong to the family of charter schools. I can finally say my twins are having the learning experience all our children so much deserve. I have to also mention, my twins are both diabetic type 1 and also have hypertension. I am so grateful to have a nurse all five days, from the morning to the evening, at school, that provides assistance when my kids need it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Baez. And our next speaker, please, Evelyn Acevedria.
As the next group comes, Ms., I just want to make a clarification.
Ms. Baez.
Ms. Baez, a quick clarification. Charter schools are part of the public system, they’re part of CPS. I think your distinction you are making was between charter schools and local community schools. Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Ms. Acevedria.
Hello, my name is Evelyn Acevedria. I am a family support specialist at SOS Children’s Village, Illinois. I come to you as a community member, leader, and alumni of Seward Branch. We were told before coming here that there had been a decision made in regards to branch closing by the end of 2018. However, as you see, we refuse to accept that decision. We refuse to allow our children to go to school where they will be overcrowded and therefore not have one-on-one attention that children need to strive and succeed. Closing the branch will limit resources for our children. The library, computer lab, and art room will no longer be available. As a leader and mentor in the community, I have learned that our children express themselves through art and technology. Being able to draw, write, read, and create videos have been an emotional outlet for our children. In a community where there is unfortunate high rate of violence, these resources have helped our children mourn, cope, and express themselves in a healthy and safe manner. It is sad to say that our school staff and children have had to work hard towards receiving high-quality education programming, but they have been. They have been working hard towards being an IB school and having the education they need and have the right to receive. Having a library, art room, and computer lab is part of the requirements to become an IB school. As I previously stated, the closing of the branch would eliminate these resources and therefore put the accreditation of the school at risk, which will result in another loss for the community. We are a strong and united community, and we will not give up. We will continue to fight for our rights and the rights of our children. We will continue working with the media, the aldermen, and continue coming to you time and time again. We will not let our children believe that they deserve less than the others. We are asking for your commitment to help us in keeping the branch open. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Acevedria. And the next speaker, please, Veronica Graciela.
Good afternoon. My name is Veronica Smith. I am the director at SOS Children’s Villages Casa de Peayac, and I have the privilege to work down the street from Seward Academy. I appreciate you this afternoon, Board, for your undivided attention. I understand that you may feel that this topic has already been covered. I understand that, and I still feel that each and every one of these parents deserve the right to be heard, because it affects their children, and I believe that is the whole point of a Board of Education. I understand that also their concern stated focused a lot around the closet space. But please forgive us if we assume the worst of what’s going to happen. This is a highly marginalized community, and they do expect the worst. That’s all they have been given in terms of any sort of social justice, community organization, as well as governmental involvement. As a social worker, I ask you to consider the Supreme Court’s... As a social worker, I ask you to consider the Supreme Court statement in Brown versus the Board of Education in that education is a right that must be made available to all on equal terms. So providing students with access to an onsite library and a computer lab that provides enrichment would be equal. Providing special-needs students with an appropriate learning environment would be equal. Providing appropriate teacher-student ratios that lend to their learning environment would be equal. Ultimately, including the eligibility to qualify as an IB school for the opportunity for advancement in higher learning education would also be equal. And so ultimately, closing the branch is limiting the students' much-needed resources that they would not normally have access to. So we are asking for your commitment to help us in keeping the branch open. We ask that for the community, we ask that for the students, the voiceless, and I do believe the whole purpose of a Board of Education is to hear the voiceless. And we are here today for that. Thank you.
Our next speaker, please, Lorena Lopez.
Mi nombre es Lorena Lopez. Tengo dos hijos que asisten a la escuela Seward. A mí como madre que trabaja, me preocupa mucho el cierre de la sucursal, ya que aparte de afectar los niños de la Seward, afectarían a los programas de nuestra comunidad. Programas que mis hijos y más de 100 niños atienden tal como canto, arte, y baile. Esos programas les desarrollan destrezas que les ayudará y abrirá el camino a una educación superior. La sucursal les ofrece esos programas, y si ustedes cierran la branch, quizás estén ahorrando dinero, pero lo que ustedes no imaginan es lo afectado que se verían mis dos hijos y los demás estudiantes. Ellos estarían más expuestos a la violencia que día a día vivimos en nuestro barrio de Back of the Yards. En sus manos está que estos programas continúen y nuestros niños y jóvenes se desarrollen en un ambiente sano y más seguro. Les pido por favor que reconsideren el compromiso para que mantengan la sucursal abierta. We are asking for your commitment to help us in keeping the branch open. Gracias.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez.
My name is Lorena Lopez. I have two children that attend Seward School. As a mother who works, I am very concerned about the closing of the branch, since it will not only affect the students in Seward, but it will also affect the programming in our community. Programs in which my children, along with more than 100 more children, participate in, such as choir, arts, and dance class. These programs help develop social skills which will help them and expose them to the road towards a higher education. The branch offers them the space for these programs, and if you close the branch, you might save money, but you are not realizing how affected my two children and the rest of the students will be. They would be more exposed to the violence that we live in day after day in our neighborhood, Back of the Yards. In your hands lie the ability for our programs to continue and that our children and youth grow up in an environment that is healthy and secure. We are asking for your commitment to help us in keeping the branch open. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last speaker, please, Consuelo Martinez-Lome.
Buenos días a todos. Mi nombre es Consuelo Martinez de Ferrer. Vivo en el barrio de las Empacadoras y soy mamá de dos niños que atienden las escuelas públicas de Chicago. Robert está en la high school, Back of the Yards College Prep, y Chelsea está en la escuela Seward Elementary. Hoy estoy aquí para dejarles saber a ustedes que como todas las madres de familia, estoy muy preocupada por la educación que reciben nuestros hijos, principalmente Chelsea, que es una niña que tiene una disibilidad. Ella tiene autismo. Me preocupa que ustedes, la junta de educación, quieran cerrar la sucursal de la escuela Seward. Ustedes quieren cerrar la sucursal sin antes pensar que los niños no son solo números. Los niños deben tener lo necesario para poder aprender al máximo todo lo que les enseñan en el tiempo de la escuela. Los niños especiales todavía necesitan más ayuda, más acomodaciones, para funcionar mejor. Ustedes quieren cerrar la sucursal de la branch, y quieren poner más alumnos de lo que deberían tener un salón de clases normal. Ustedes quieren poner a los niños especiales en closet, como si ese fuera su salón, y eso no es justo. Estos niños les da miedo estar encerrados en lugares tan pequeños como los closets. Un niño estando en un closet como salón de clases no aprenderá nada. Estaría inquieto y tendría tanta calor que se escaparía de ahí, y vendrían aún así más problemas. Yo quiero, yo no quiero eso para mi hija Chelsea, y no lo quiero para ningún otro niño de toda la escuela en mi comunidad. Por eso hoy estoy aquí pidiendo a ustedes, la junta de educación, nos ayuden. Que no cierre la sucursal de la Seward. Mi hija y todos los niños especiales con alguna disabilidad, y todos los otros niños de mi barrio de las Empacadoras, necesitamos ser tratados con respeto, con dignidad, y con amor, porque solo así obtendrán la mejor educación, y el día de mañana ellos serán hombres y mujeres productivas y exitosos. We are asking for your commitment to help us in keeping the branch open. Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez.
Can I just say one thing? I know Dr. Jackson's already made a commitment to have a continued dialogue with you all and share the information we have of the demographics, et cetera. From the board's perspective, you know, we do have office hours. This is an example of the kind of issue we would talk about at office hours. I know we've already mentioned that Katie's going to schedule some office hours with a board member. I've volunteered myself to do that, and I've asked that that take place at Seward, so I can see for myself sort of how the school's being used, et cetera. So I just, you have our commitment that we're continuing to listen. Thanks.
Thank you.
Just going to translate for her.
Sure. Sorry, I apologize.
It's okay. Good morning, my name is Consuelo Martinez. I live in Back of the Yards community. I'm a mother of two kids that attend Chicago public schools. Robert goes to Back of the Yards High School College Prep, and Chelsea is going to Seward. I'm here today to share the concern that I have, like other mothers do, regarding the education my children receive, especially Chelsea, who has the disability of autism. I'm very concerned that the Board of Education wants to close the branch. You want to close down the branch without taking the children into consideration. They are not just numbers. Children should have their needs met to be able to focus and learn as much as they can in class. Children with special needs need more support and accommodation to be able to function better. Enclosing the Seward branch and filling up classrooms, more students than the normal class would have, would be detrimental. You want to place children with special needs in closets, like if this was a fit classroom. That's not fair. These children are afraid of being in small confined spaces like closets. Using a closet for a classroom will not help our children's education. They will not be able to learn anything, because they will be anxious, and it will be hot, that they will try to escape from there and subsequently creating more issues. I don't want this for my daughter Chelsea, and I don't want this for any children at Seward, and that's why I'm here today, to ask you not to close the branch. My daughter and any child with any type of disability, and all of the kids in Back of the Yards neighborhood, need to be treated with respect, dignity, and love. This is the only way they will learn to obtain a better education, so that in the future they can excel and become productive members of society. We are asking for your support and commitment to help us in keeping the branch open. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. President, our next speakers then will be Speaker number 15, please, Leon Barley, followed by Speaker 21, Sheri Barley. We will then have Speaker number 17, Robert Lamont, and Speaker 19, Maria Toribio, and Speaker 36, Maria Laguna.
Good afternoon, President Clark and distinguished members of the board. I'm here today because we, the state of the school, the state of South Shore School is continuously going down. Just the other day, there was a, I think, a couple days ago, there was a student riding her bicycle down the hallway. There's boys that have their pants sagging, and had to be asked to pull their pants up. And my point is, if that's going on, what is the education process like? Because we all know, if you look at the other schools that, especially the preparatory schools, they're all dressed in ties and uniforms. The principal decided not to have any uniforms, and this is what we get, we knew this was going to happen. There's kids, and this is brought to my attention by community members, parents, there's kids leaving the school, and nobody knows who's coming in the school, nobody knows who's really going out of the school, and it's ridiculous. We also had a, there was an election, the teachers had to replace a vacancy, a teacher vacancy. The teacher that won, this was done in March, the teacher that won, has been going back and forth with the principal, because the principal, she's been holding the principal accountable. You know, this is what we need, she's saying what we need, she's, because there's allegations of pressure for grades to be changed. And with that being said, this teacher has had several grievances as well, and in one grievance, and this was information relayed to me, that the principal said, "I should have won you a long time ago." Now, how does that even, how do you even conduct business like that? And with that being said, there's many different issues going on that is keeping--
Mr. Barley?
I'll finish up. That is keeping the school from moving forward. There was one clerk that sent an email to all LSC members saying, "Congratulations, US News report, World Report, said that we were a great school," but 14% of the students are college-ready, according to that same report. That is laughable, to celebrate 14%, that means 14 out of every 100 kids is ready to go on to college. That's ridiculous.
Thank you, Mr. Barley.
As you leave the podium, where's Matt? You see that gentleman with his hand up? That's Matt Lyons. He's the head of our personnel, the division. You raised some questions that I think he needs to address, so just make sure you see him.
Okay.
And our next speaker, please, Sheri Barley.
Sheri.
Sheri, sorry, thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. I've been here before. My name is Sheri Barley. I am a parent of a senior at South Shore International College Prep, and I have to say, we are running out of time. June 9th is the scheduled date for the senior prom. However, we have many parents who are struggling to pay the prom fee. The prom fee is $185 per student. $185 per student, not per couple, per student. So if you have a senior who's taken a date that does not attend South Shore, that senior will be responsible for paying $370. So it would be $370 per couple, plus $30 to park at the venue, which is the Navy Pier Crystal Garden. So now that's a total of $400 per student. What I would like to know is, on the handout, it states that the venue has been contracted for 160 students. So let's do the math. If we have 160 students, and you multiply that by the $185 fee, we're looking at $29,600. Okay. According to the same printout, the total cost of that venue is $24,250. Let's subtract. The difference is $5,350. My question is, where is that surplus going? Where is it going? So now, we're only looking at 160 students. If we had more than that to attend the prom and take dates--
Ms. Barley?
I'm closing. Now you're looking at a surplus of over $5,000. The parents are struggling. They're feeling forced to have to pay this fee, because they want to see their son and/or daughter attend the prom. We need some help, and we need it right away, because the prom is right around the corner. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Jackson, is this something on your radar screen?
It is. Just a few clarifying things, and I don't know the answer to all these questions. It is customary that the prom is a fundraiser of sorts for the school. So my one question would be, and I know you all are members of the local school council, is you could request from the principal the same question you just posed to the board, how are the additional funds being used?
Well, at a recent PAC meeting, she stated that the students had to leave a gift for the school. $5,000? I think not. I think not.
Yeah, and so I think we can work with Willie and the network chief on this. Now, if a school gift is included, typically it's itemized, like the other items are on this list, so we can definitely work with the principal on that. But just, I know it's a brand-new school, I think it's either the second graduating class--
This is actually the third.
The third. And typically, it is a fundraiser. Additional funds are raised, so that you can make down payments and other things like that ahead of time, and I think it'll get the school away from the practice you described at an earlier meeting, where, you know, the school is kind of asking parents to hurry up and pay, because they got to make down payments. So it is a process, but I think the solution rests with communication with the principal. I know that's something that you guys have been working through this year, so I want to have Willie and the chief, Dace, I'm sorry, work with you to get answers to your specific question around the surplus.
And you're right, there was a fundraiser, a cookie dough fundraiser, but because of the way in which it was done, because of the way in which it was handled, a number of parents didn't know about it, and therefore they didn't even participate in it. So I just felt like, why did the prom have to be at Navy Pier? We have 130 seniors. She said, out of her own mouth, and I'm speaking of the principal, well, four parents worked with us. What happened to the other 126 parents?
Let me, just, I think Dr. Jackson's going to look into this.
Okay.
The board is probably not going to get actively involved in whether prom is being held, et cetera.
Right.
But I think that what I get from all this is that you don't have clarity of how the dollars were spent--
Exactly.
And the reason for cost.
Exactly.
You should have clarity, and I'm sure that Dr. Jackson will make sure you get it.
I really appreciate you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I just want to say that I know that they've been before this board with issues with South Shore on several occasions, and last year Willie did ask me to go out and meet with the principal, and she wanted to meet with me so we could work with the LSC. So I'm going to ask Willie to set up that meeting again, and maybe the chief can be there, and we can find out actually just what's going on, because it's more than the prom.
Okay.
It is, and I thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our next speaker, please, Robert Lamont.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Robert Lamont, Veterans for Peace. May I ask you to decide to remove junior ROTC from the curriculum, dress the leadership training in civilian clothes? The military solution to most problems in the United States is violence and force. After I got out of the military, I became a teacher of history at Westinghouse High School, and I learned that education will teach that thinking is not the same as judgment, but it creates the right conditions for judgment. Now, what is that judgment? The ability to hear another voice, the ability to have a dialogue with oneself or the world, the moral world, and judgment requires a moral compass. That is love, not hate, appreciation for our equal rights from the Declaration of Independence. Military instructors teaching the military way does not accomplish this goal of education, unless you want all teachers to wear military uniforms, and all of you wear military uniforms, and militarize the whole country. Therefore, I ask you to remove junior ROTC from the curriculum and teach judgment with a moral compass. We need education without the militarization of the nation and of the schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lamont. And our next speaker, Mr. President, Maria Toribio, please.
Buenas tardes, Mr. Clark, y board. Nosotros somos los padres activos de Nixon en la comunidad de Hermosa. El parque de nuestra comunidad y de nuestra escuela está muy dañado. Más de 20 niños se han accidentado con heridas profundas. Aunque ya se han removido y reemplazado algunas partes, el lugar sigue siendo un peligro para nuestros hijos. Los niños que lo usan son niños de prekinder hasta primer año. Por estas razones-- Por estas razones, los padres trabajaron duro junto con la comunidad y las organizaciones para cambiar el parque. Comenzamos por tocar puertas, pedir firmas, hablar con las personas de nuestra comunidad, y visitar negocios y políticos. Después de tanto esfuerzo, por fin encontramos una organización que se llama Kaboom, la cual hemos recibido de ellos 150,000 dólares. También trabajamos duro en una campaña para ganarnos 90,000 dólares del dinero participatorio de la ciudad con nuestro alderman Carlos Rosa. Pero la organización de Kaboom nos puso como requisito que los padres recaudaran 8,500 dólares. Para eso realizamos una quermés para recaudar el dinero que se necesitaba. Y fue muy conmovedor ver a los niños con sus monedas en manos, los padres ayudando y donando cosas, los maestros, la comunidad respondiendo al evento, y así logramos recaudar 10,000 dólares. Pero nos faltan 60,000 dólares para el, para la goma que necesita nuestro parque. Después de muchos esfuerzos, no hemos conseguido aún esa donación. Por eso hoy venimos a pedirles que por favor nos apoyen con los 60, 60,000 dólares que nos faltan para finalizar el proyecto. Sabemos que el distrito no tiene ahora dinero, pero por favor hagan su mayor esfuerzo. Nuestros niños merecen jugar en un lugar bonito y seguro. Muchas gracias.
Maria Letizia Toribio, we are parents from Nixon Elementary at Hermosa Neighborhood. Our school playlot is in very bad shape. We have more than 20 children suffering accidents recently because of that. Parts of the floor have been removed and replaced, but still, the playlot is a dangerous place for small children. That's why we have worked very hard with the community to make changes in the park. We knock on doors, collect the signatures, money, we visit business and politicians. After much effort, we got a 150,000 grant from an organization called Kaboom. We also worked very hard to receive funds from the alderman Rosa, 90,000, 90,000 dollars. And we ourselves collected 10,000 dollars in the neighborhood with the cooperation of the children and the parents. But still, we need a new rubber floor for the playlot, and that's why we are here today, hoping that the district could donate 60,000 dollars to complete the project. We know that the district doesn't have money right away, but please do your best effort because our children, eh, deserve a nice and safe place to, to play. So we need, and we are still looking for more money to complete the new playlot. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next speaker then is Maria Laguna, please.
Sí, buenas tardes, mi nombre es Margarita Laguna. Yo soy una madre de uno de los niños, de los 20 niños que, o más, verdad, no lo sé cuántos sean, pero yo soy madre de uno de ellos que fue accidentado en esos juegos, que están muy dañados. Mi niño tenía 10 años, hace tres años fue el accidente, se dañó algo muy grande, una herida muy grande. Me espanté demasiado como él, al ver su sangre. Yo no supe si se había roto algún hueso, nos, me espanté muy, mucho como él. Y no me gustaría que más niños fueran dañados, fueran, también psicológicamente, porque mi niño desde en eso tiempo para acá, él, él ya no, no quiere jugar fútbol, ya no se pone short, porque fue una herida muy grande, como unos 15 centímetros, algo grande. Yo les pregunto a ustedes, nos faltan 60,000 dólares para ese parque que queremos para nuestra comunidad, que tenemos muchos niños ahí todavía, bastante. Quisiera saber si ustedes pudieran ayudarnos con lo que nos falta.
My name is Margarita Laguna, I am the mother. My, my son was one of the children injured in the, in the park. That happened three years ago, he was 10 years old at the time. It was an awful experience for my child. Uh, the park is in very bad condition. He was running, one of his legs was trapped in a hole, he suffered a, a cut, 15 centimeters cut in one of the legs, a lot of blood, he was horrified, shaking. Me too, when I saw that, I didn't know what happened, maybe he was a, a broken bone or something like that. So that's why, uh, we are here, trying to get more money to complete the renovation of the playlot. Uh, my child has suffered psychologically because of that. He doesn't want to wear shorts because he's ashamed of the scar. He doesn't want to play soccer anymore, he doesn't to be shown, seen in public with a scar in the leg. And he's always asking me what's going on with the new park. That's why we're here, we still need 60,000 more dollars, and we are hoping that maybe the district could chip in and give us a help to receive that money. Thank you for your help.
Can I ask one clarifying question? Is this the first time they petitioned the board or worked with our facilities department?
They, they feel that Kaboom already talked to CPS about this.
Okay. We have facilities representation here, and, you know, I don't know if it's appropriate now, President Clark, to provide, but this is the first I'm aware of.
I'm pretty sure this is the first time it's come to the board, uh, and you, you've done exactly what I would have done. I'll file, this is a request for capital dollars. Um, I don't know whether this is even on your radar screen, but you heard the issue. It may be appropriate to get more information, uh, at the conclusion of the meeting.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, gracias.
Thank you.
Mr. President, our next speaker will be Speaker number 37, please, Kimberly Robinson, followed by Speaker 23, Rosemary Vega. We will then have Speaker 25, Jennifer Jones, and Speaker 27, Jose Ramirez. Please proceed.
Hi, my name is Kimberly, from Sarah E. Good STEM Academy. Uh, today I have three key points to make it quick. The first one is the discrimination and unfairness of the black kids. They are unnecessarily punished for nonsense. When the Hispanic and Latino kids can bring weed brownies and overdose almost off of them, what they had to call the paramedics to come and get them. The food pantry is geared toward the Latinos and the Hispanic culture, not the African-American culture. We have nothing. Uh, the PAC and LSC is broken up into two different meetings, the black meeting and the Latino and Hispanic meeting, which I don't understand. Programs, it's a STEM school, Olive Harvey, they're supposed to be the first school to do this with Olive Harvey, to be associate's degrees. They're not geared towards our African-American kids to get into this program, the testing because it's some Spanish and some of our kids are not as fluent in Spanish. Grievance counselors, we went through a real bad grievance where the boy was found in the trunk, was a student of Sarah E. Good, they sent no grievance counselors in for our kids. They had nothing for them. They had to deal with it and us as parents the best way that we knew how. We had a dean there by the name of Dean Martin, who was pushed out by different write-ups and things, who understood the culture of our kids, who can understand that, since she's been pushed out in two weeks, there's been 12 fights there. My child was so upset that she had a sit-in, you might have the printout, where she called Channel 9, Channel 5 of the discrimination, where she took all the black kids of that school, and they sat in the office until the principal brung himself out the office. Half of the kids said, we don't even know you. The principal stays in the office. So she organized a sit-in based on discrimination against the black kids and achievement. My experience was it, uh, with the administrative, I called for a field trip, put me on hold for 30 minutes, called my daughter to see what was going on, nothing happened. So I'm here now as a voice to let you all know that Sarah E. Good is an excellent school, but there's no culture for our black kids that they, you know, it's a diverse-
Ms. Robinson.
Sorry, it's a diverse school, so there's nothing there for our kids.
Okay. It's, it's Ms. Washington?
Ms. Robinson.
Ms. Robinson, I'm sorry. You can speak with Eugene on our team and just give more information. I know you had something to share, but we'd be happy to have a dialogue with you about some of the concerns that you raised, so, Mr. Crawford can assist you.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. Our next speaker, please, Rosemary Vega, last call.
Hello, my name is Rosemary Vega. I've been banned for three years for speaking, or from speaking at the Board of Education. My question here today is, how much taxpayers' money have you spent on keeping me silenced? No one's gonna answer the question?
Please continue.
Dr. Heinz hangs her head lower than Barbara Burt Bennett. What shame she got to be sitting there with her head so low. I had a speech and I'm so glad I left it, because what you guys need is reality. You guys are so far disconnected from the real world. And I thought that in three years, I was gonna come back and find change. I found change, change of space, change of looks, change of people. The only thing I haven't seen changes is change of hearts, or, or elect the school board, because you still remain unelected by the people, by the parents, by the students. You don't represent us. You know, it's nice to see, nice to see some color up there, Frank. It's very nice. I hope you don't take the bite like Barbara Burt Bennett did. I really do. But, um, I'm here because I am really, really wanna know how much taxpayers' money have you spent banning a parent from speaking at the board? From having security, you know, two and three securities on me, escorting me in and out, keeping me out of the board meetings? How is that lifting a ban? How is that you giving a parent an opportunity? Because I don't speak how you want me to speak? Because I don't act how you want me to act? There's real emotions here, there's real problems in the outside world, the worlds that you don't know. You know, you spoke earlier about a 10% that wouldn't know what STEM is.
Ms. Vega.
Funny thing is, that the 90% that you represent, I'm sure don't know what it is to be without light, or without gas, to do homework at night without light, or to take a cold shower. To know that all these problems spill into our schools, yet you make decisions based on money and race, because that's what it is. The North Side looks pretty good while the South Side looks hungry.
Ms. Vega, thank you for your comments.
Are you not gonna talk to me, Frank? You talk to everybody else here.
I listen to.
Yeah. I hope you do.
Thank you, Ms. Vega.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker, please, Jennifer Jones, last call. Moving on to the next speaker, Jose Ramirez. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Jones, a parent of two CPS children. I'm compelled to speak with you today because I'm extremely concerned with recent CPS funding decisions. Last week, Mayor Emanuel hinted at potential long-term revenue solutions, like seeking new taxes on downtown businesses and high net worth individuals. By the end of the week, all sustainable revenue options were off the table, and once again, CPS is set to take a high-interest loan and temporarily fill the budget hole to end the school year. Then on Monday morning, we found out that CPS is asking for the authority to add up to half a billion dollars of debt to long-term obligations just to start the next school year. When I heard this news, I said to myself, who thinks this is the best option? While I don't know what each of you are thinking, I do know that you, our Board of Education, is responsible for the financial oversight of Chicago Public Schools. The decision to drive CPS into further debt does not exhibit watchful care, but a quick temporary fix for a long-term issue. I fully understand that Chicago is not being funded equally by the state, but what I don't understand is how you can continue to ignore the need for sustainable CPS revenue from our city. If the board's goal truly is to provide a high-quality, world-class education for our students, equal funding from the state will not be enough to reach this objective. Today's closed-door agenda includes authorizing the latest loans, but I don't see any specific plans to discuss future funding. I implore you to explore options like cutting costs in CPS administrative offices, reevaluating future capital projects, reviewing third-party contracts, and lobbying the mayor, who wants to mandate a college, military, or job acceptance letter to graduate, but isn't offering any additional local revenue to help fund the policy. These ideas are just the beginning of the work that needs to be done to provide quality learning environment for our children. May I count on you to discuss sustainable funding options today, so that there will no, there will not be more brash choices next year?
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Our next speaker, please.
No response?
Um, I was distracted for a moment, I'm sorry. The board does actually continuously discuss a whole assortment of different options, including the opportunity for our new revenues. Um, and within our ability, our relatively limited ability to generate them ourselves, we look for every option. No one sitting here feels good about continuing borrowing, you don't do it in your personal life, and frankly, don't wanna continue doing it for the board. But we will do all we can to keep the schools open, and this is the options we're left with for the time being. I do believe that there will be permanent solutions. As stated earlier, uh, when the union spokesman was making comments, that in fact, this administration, namely CEO Claypool, Dr. Jackson, and many others, Ron Denard, have worked very hard to reduce the overall cash deficit and reduce, frankly, a balanced budget so the problem doesn't continue to get worse and worse. The difficulty is, the problem is very large. It has actually gotten better, nowhere near good enough.
Yeah, I, I'm just not seeing any sustainable solutions being brought to the table.
I can certainly, uh, understand your, your view, that the solutions you see don't appear to be the best solutions. Um, and, you know, it's a valid point. Uh, I think that the best solutions we have for now. Thank you very much.
One more thing, Mr. Clark, would you ever consider a voter referendum?
I'm sorry?
Would you ever consider a voter referendum?
For what?
You know, if you have a solution that perhaps the mayor doesn't support, to ask the people of Chicago to vote on it?
Uh, I don't know that we even have that authority. Um, we're not politicians, frankly. Interesting thought, but I don't believe the board actually has that authority. But the board speaks, uh, and, and this board in particular speaks. So if, if something presents itself, even if it's controversial, this board would certainly speak to it publicly.
Is that something I can follow up with you on?
Uh, you can follow up with me or any of the board members on versing the issue that are, that are raised.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President. And our next speaker, please, Jose Ramirez, last call. Moving on to the next speakers, we have Speaker number 28, please, Bridget Manoni, followed by Speaker 29, Terri Smith, Speaker 30, Lynn White. Please state your name.
Good afternoon, my name's Bridget Manoni. My two children go to Skinner North Elementary School. I have a handout, it's a picture of my son. His name is Joey Manoni, and he's in second grade. He loves trains, roller coasters, and playing baseball. Four weeks ago, when I picked up my children from their bus stop after school, Joey handed me a note telling me and my husband that everyone on the bus hates him, and literally begging for us to help him. It was soul-crushing. For the last three years that my son has attended Skinner North, he has been relentlessly and viciously bullied. On the bus, he was pushed down onto a seat by a 10-year-old student who bounced up and down on his chest and choked him, while other 10-year-olds scratched him all over his arms, stole his shoes off his feet, and stole his sunglasses. He's been called stupid, idiot, loser, and told that nobody likes him repeatedly by other students. Slapped by another student, who then shoved him into a brick wall, pinned him down, and slammed his head into the wall repeatedly. While I'm upset at the way that these incidents have been handled, my anger lies mostly with the CPS anti-bullying policy and the Code of Conduct, which dictates punishments allocated to students for various offenses. The CPS Code of Conduct specifically states, whenever possible interventions and consequences that do not exclude the student, the bully, from his or her regular schedule should be attempted first. Nowhere in there does it offer the same protection for the victims. Through lack of appropriate consequences, students like my son are repeatedly revictimized. These policies must be changed to protect our children. Stop allowing bullies and other violent students to be allowed- Stop allowing bullies and other violent students to be allowed to repeat their behavior. More needs to be done to keep the victims safe. This may sound dramatic to some, but I'll leave you with these two names to consider. China Howard and Mackenzie Flipple, both CPS elementary school students who took their own lives due to relentless bullying. All students are so much more than a CPS ID number. They have hearts and dreams and families. CPS failed these students. My son's name is Joey Minone. He likes trains and roller coasters and playing baseball. Don't fail my son. Please, don't fail my son.
I'm so sorry to hear your testimony because that's what it is. Jaden, is this something you're aware of? Have you reported this to the school?
Every incident, sir.
Dr. Jackson, are you hearing this for the first time?
This is my first time and I was wondering, is it a recent issue? I know there's been a principal transition or is this, you said three years, so it's been going on longer.
It's been happening since he was in kindergarten.
So we should have Jaden connect with you.
The head of security is behind you. Please give her your details. I don't, I don't have any reason to refute anything you said. I don't know any of the details, but what you described, both of you are horrendous and never should happen to any child and never should be tolerated. Jaden, get the details.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our next speaker, please, Terri Smith, last call. Moving on to the next speaker, Lynn White. As she approaches the podium, our next speaker will be Keith Kessel, followed by Speaker 34, Grace Dawson, and Speaker 40, Alice Brown. Please state your name.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm here, my name is Lynn White. I'm here as the chair of Limbloom, ALS. And I wanna share a bit of information and request some action from you, the Board. Northwestern, Stanford, University of Chicago, MIT, University of Michigan, Pomona, Claremont-McKenna, Harvard, Oberlin, Brown, Dartmouth, Duke, USC, Rice, University of Pennsylvania, Trinity, Georgia Tech, and some of the highest-performing historically black colleges and universities. These are some of the schools our students at Limbloom are going to have been accepted to. Now, don't applaud yet. High-opt high schools, Northside Prep, Lane, Lake Forest, Arlington Heights, Limbloom, Whitney Young, and a host of others. Best-ranked high schools by US News, Northside Prep, Peyton, Jones, Young, Lane, Stevenson, Hinsdale, Lake Park, Lincoln Park, Prospect, Brooks, Lake Forest. Did you notice that Limbloom was not mentioned? Now, I raise this because Limbloom has been excluded from this list and the principal as well as the network chief have been in touch with US News. They have also been in touch with, I know Dr. Jackson and other people affiliated with CPS. We have been told that we were excluded because Limbloom does not have any current data, which is incorrect because we do have current data and they choose not to use the data that we have. Some people may view this as nothing more than a vanity list. However, this list is also used by several different universities, such as those that our students will be attending. Given Mr. Claypool's position on the state's discriminatory practices in school funding, I question why every Board member present is not incensed and outraged by the exclusion of one of the state's highest-performing high schools that has a majority African-American and Latino population.
Ms. White?
Yes, I'm wrapping up. We at Limbloom implore you, the Board, to join us, the parents, as well as our faculty and staff members, to speak truth to what is dirty data. And if any of you have ever worked with data, you know what dirty data looks like. We do. This has been used to marginalize our students and we need your help in making sure that our students, who are going to some of our nation's top universities as well as schools outside of the nation, are properly recognized. Also, it was stated earlier about the cleanliness of the schools. Mr. Mather can attest to this. Limbloom is filthy. The person that stated that the schools are in great shape, that's not true. I don't know what school he goes to. I do educational publishing sales. I'm in schools. They're filthy. The bathrooms are filthy.
Thank you, Ms. White.
The cafeterias are filthy. Please fix it.
Before the, before the next speaker, before you start, sir. US News and World Report, you know, I actually use that in talks all the time and very proud of the schools that are listed. I don't really know the...
Yeah, the methodology, methodology that they use is sometimes debated. I think they put a premium on AP courses or something like that. I don't wanna misspeak. But I believe Limbloom was ranked, Alan, is that? It is in the previous year and this year? Except this year?
I was told they opted out the test. That's what I was told.
Yeah, why, so what was the reason you were given as to why it wasn't included? Okay.
I was told they opted out.
Okay. So I mean, we... Well, we can definitely, I think, I'll contact Chief Hogarth. We would definitely help advocate on your behalf. I mean, if it's a situation where data wasn't included, the district would be in the same position that you're in. We would have the same position that you have, that we would like our schools recognized. I'm not exactly sure what happened.
Sorry.
Because we don't manage that.
Who said that, that Limbloom didn't have data? You said we were told by whom?
US News.
Right.
By US News, okay.
To our network chief, who was our principal stating that Limbloom did not have any current data. We have current data. We have some of the site data that they have used with the other high schools.
Yeah.
And so all we're asking the Board to do is to support us in our effort to make sure that we are properly recognized because we certainly have the student body that speaks to a highly performing group of students. And I would think that given where we are with the lawsuit and all, that this would be something that would be upsetting to the Board. And we can't figure out why we haven't gotten any support on this today. So I'm here today to perform...
And you've made yourself perfectly clear. If there's an opportunity to have one of our schools included in this report that was not included and they should have been included, we will be very strong advocates of that. And Dr. Jackson has already spoke to that. And...
I should also note in defense of the Board, this is, and CPS management, this is the first we've heard of it. So we are fully in support with you and are happy to work, work on that.
Okay, please go for it.
Mr. Kessel?
Yeah, I'm not here for Limbloom, but as a former student who subs at Limbloom, I can vouch for that. And I was told by the principal that because they opted out of the test. That's what I was told and I was concerned with that too. Right. I just tell them what they told me. Okay. But I'm here on a couple, quick, two, two quick things before I get to the meeting here, was the Board's support of House Bill 3436. Also, I wanna stand again as a sub who goes through different magnet schools to please allow the principals to go back to having discretion, not only to pick the students and some of the students in the school, but also to get rid of some of the disruptive students in the schools as well because it's turning our magnet schools into schools that's nothing really special. I was at one particular school last week. One kid had to fight three times in one day, but there's nothing they can do with him. But what I'm here for is, I'm also a parent at Murray Language Academy. No, this didn't happen in Murray incident from last week. But I'm an adoptive parent and I have involved in an open adoption, which my daughter, who came out of foster care, we didn't separate her from her family once they say, said she's mine. And her birth mother wanted all her kids, they saw how smart my daughter is and that curriculum at Murray and she wanted her kids to come into Murray. And matter of fact, one of them is living with me right now. And they took the test, they did the thing, but they're not, they're not coming in as sibling status. And the rule says that the sibling status, all three have to be under the same roof. I'm gonna try to get this done in 30 seconds. All three have to be under the same roof. Well, if you adopt, but it does, it does include adoptive as a sibling. Well, if you adopt it, you're not gonna live under the same roof. And then if it's discriminatory, because you can have a divorced couple, one parent have one child, other parent have another child, live in two different places, but they won't qualify because they siblings with the same parents, but they don't live under the same roof. Now, if my, my, these are, they, that these are her blood brother and sister, but yet they have to come in through the regular lottery. Yeah, through the regular lottery, which is really discrimination against siblings who are real siblings, but they have to live in the same roof, which also discriminates against adoptive parents who wants to keep the blood siblings together. Are y'all familiar with House Bill 3436, is right?
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm gonna make a comment as you leave. I don't need a response. Jaden is not in the room, but both the CEO and Dr. Jackson are. I've heard a couple people make reference to disturbances in schools and the fact that disruptive students are not being supervised or appropriate discipline is not being applied. I know one of the things that CPS is proud of, and I think with justification, we have fewer kids being dismissed, thrown out of school because you wouldn't have been schools being, getting educated. And in fact, that's one of the criticisms that I hear often levied at some of the charter schools, that they're overly strict with their discipline. I don't know, I guess, Dr. Jackson, if somewhere there's an issue here that's percolating that requires an additional look or whether these are isolated cases that need to be addressed. But a subject that just I've heard repeated several times by different speakers, that we've got young people that are disrupting the education process in a fashion that should not be acceptable. And the horrendous story that the couple spoke to dealing with their very young child, which I know that we're going to resolve quickly.
Just a few points on that. Number one, and this isn't an excuse, but just more so to provide perspective. I just wanna make sure people are clear that students, there will be student misbehavior in any school. It's not just a CPS school. And I reject anything that singles out CPS schools as being in that, that situation. We do have clear policies in place and where there are situations where either the principal or disciplinarian or whomever is responsible for ensuring that though, that code of conduct is followed. If they fail to do that, there is a protocol in place where things are reported to the network. If it's not resolved there, it's reported to ONS. Not resolved there, it could go even further, all the way up to the CEO's office. I would just caution us to be specific in some of those things. Now, obviously, the situation that was mentioned around bullying was very specific. We have a name, a face, an incident, and we will follow up immediately. But I do wanna acknowledge that there are times where things are said in here that are not exactly true. And we, as you pointed out, President Clark, at a, a, a meeting a while back, that, you know, the district has a credibility issue. But I also think that makes it easy to just say things that sometimes are not true. Case in point, there was a point made earlier today that there, that Tarkington hasn't hired a black teacher since 2006. I immediately texted our HR department and found that that is not true. So we can't combat everything that's said, but when there is a situation where a student is not being held accountable, we will take that specific information and investigate it immediately. But sweeping generalizations, I can't comment on all of those unless I'm given an opportunity to address it specifically and to fix it.
Thank you very much, Dr. Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. We'll continue with the speakers. Speaker 34, please, Grace Dawson.
Good afternoon. I'm Grace Dawson, the president of the Dusable High School Alumni Association for Action. President Clark and esteemed Board members, we are asking you as a Board to officially grant Jean Baptiste Point Dusable, a landmark high school, the opportunity to live again. About 10 years ago, when small high schools became a trend in Chicago, Dusable was one of the institution's fallen victim to this new concept. It has been a dismal failure. One of the three small schools was shut down two years ago for lack of satisfactory academic results. The remaining two schools have low enrollment, low academic achievement, low attendance rates, and overblown discipline problems. There is little collaboration between the two schools and much rivalry among the students. Also during these 10 years, there has been 10 different principals serving the two schools. We love and respect the students who chose to come to 4934 South Wabash, but all of those who entered these doors deserve a quality education steeped in African-American history and culture, one that builds character and productivity by offering opportunities to learn various music genres, have international exposure through an IB program, have exposure to award-winning scientific concepts and practices in entrepreneurship. The violence that has erupted in cities around the country, especially in minority neighborhoods, must be eradicated. We grew up poor with lots of love and high expectations from our parents and community. Dusable High was the place that helped direct us to our goals. In these financially challenging times, we ask you not to waste valuable resources on paying two principals, two assistant principals, double clerical staff, funding two school councils, and it goes on and on. We ask for one Dusable, one visionary principal, other needed faculty and staff reporting to the same authority, programs that build high self-esteem, and teachers who motivate and have great pedagogical skills that will help them connect with their students. Please make the motion for one Dusable. Dusable must be sustained. Dusable's legacy of hundreds of successful African-Americans will help today's students connect with those like themselves. Also, students will be taught to recognize the greatness in themselves through knowledge of today's successful African-Americans. Why one Dusable? No other school has embraced the concept of the impact that the legacy, history, and concentration of who they believe they are, paired with excellent teaching and a relevant curriculum, will lead to successful scholars and productive citizens.
Thank you.
I read right along with you.
Our next speaker, please, Ms. Brown.
Hi, my name is Alice Brown. I'd like to say, we, the Dusable High School Alumni Coalition for Action, are asking that both small schools on the Dusable High School campus at 4934 South Wabash be consolidated into one school with one name, Dusable High School. Important history is embedded in the landmark campus name, Dusable. Dusable Campus was landmarked by the City of Chicago in 2013. And in fact, both small schools already play on the same Dusable Panthers sports team against citywide schools. The Great Migration caused Dusable to become the first school in Chicago built for a black population. It opened in 1935 and was named after Jean Baptiste Point Dusable, a black man who was Chicago's first non-native settler. Please see in your handout some of the famous movers, movers and shakers that Dusable High produced. The consolidation of the two small schools as Dusable High will benefit the historic consciousness and scholastic advancement of current students and of future students. One Dusable will build self-esteem among students as they share an important, common narrative. They will become tomorrow's movers and shakers, emulating those of Dusable's glory days. One Dusable will also cost less than two small schools and save CPS money. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Our next speaker, please, Speaker 35.
And I just want to say to Frank Clark and to Mahalia Hines and Denise Little, after having worked with them all the years, 40 to 50 years, well, I think you're doing a wonderful Board board, so don't get down when somebody else says something not so complimentary about that name.
Now, people are gonna think we let you have a few extra minutes because you said something nice.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our next speaker, please, Speaker 35, Val Free, followed by Speaker 39, Alexis Wallace. We will then have Speaker 42, Leticia Sanchez, and Speaker 43, Carmen Valdez. Last call for Val Free. Alexis Wallace, last call. Last call for Leticia Sanchez. Last call for Carmen Valdez. Moving on to Speaker 45, please, Patrick Jones, followed by Speaker 46, Anthony Solis Cruz, Speaker 55, Kathy Dale, and the last speaker, Tom Odell. Patrick Jones, thank you. Please proceed.
This just went blank on me for a second. Sorry, Val.
Sorry, Valdez. Good morning, President Clark, board members, and people joining us from our community. My name is Patrick Jones. As of a week ago, I was employed by CPS as a special education teacher, until I resigned under unfavorable conditions. Even though my fate seems to have been sealed by my resignation, I wanted to speak here today. Because even though I will not be able to continue my career as a special education teacher, I want nothing but the best for my former students and coworkers. There is a problem I want to speak about that exists within our schools that places students and teachers in harm's way. This situation is a lack of safety and crisis prevention and intervention training for teachers and school personnel. Prior to teaching with CPS, I worked for two residential treatment facilities in Chicago for nearly six years, where I had been involved in hundreds of crises that involved aggressive and violent behavior by youth who were, to put it simply, not well. In that time, I learned from training and experiences how to protect myself and others simultaneously. In these sometimes tense moments, I was considered a valuable asset by my employers, my coworkers, and team members, because safety for all was always my biggest concern. Many of these people wrote letters for me testifying to this fact. These letters are currently sitting in a manila envelope on my desk at home. In nearly two years of working as a teacher on the west side of Chicago, I'd observed and been a part of countless events involving students, teachers, and administration where aggressive, violent, and dangerous behavior were present. I have nearly 100 incident reports that went unnoticed and without a response that testify to this. All these events had one common denominator, and that was a collective understanding of what to do and how to act when a student attacks other students and/or teachers. This lack of collective understanding is how students, teachers, and administrators get hurt or lose their jobs. It contributed to how my career with CPS ended. I was just another caring, non-tenured teacher left alone to help a student who has a history of violent, threatening, disruptive. I just ask that in the future, because my fate has been sealed here, that we explore more opportunities for training our staff so that teachers and students don't get hurt and they don't be placed and that they're not placed in a situation like I was. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your constructive input, even though you're no longer a part of the system. I appreciate hearing it.
Our next speaker, please.
Hey, good afternoon. I'll thank you for your time. My name is Anthony Solis Cruz. I go by Tony Solis. I'm a grad of CPS. I went to Gladstone Elementary, now closed. Shields Elementary, still up and running, and Jones College Prep, so I'm very proud of that. I'm here to talk about More Than a Figure. I'm sure you have the handout right in front of you. This is a brand-new organization that is now chartered, and we have 501(c)(3) status as of March. So what this organization does is, I'm sure, comments from Mr. Claypool early tell me that you guys are all very well aware of the achievement gap between socioeconomic status and students of color. And that is very important, and that is something that we are directly going to address with More Than a Figure. Also, I'm sure that you've made aware of the inequity of opportunity present in our backyards and Chicago public schools. So what More Than a Figure is trying to do is we are trying to bring intentional funding to students of low socioeconomic status and to students of color to provide opportunities, extracurricular opportunities, of course, for them to be able to grow and develop not only motivation, but of skills that will be beneficial to them in the long run. Now, with the proposal that I have in front of you, there's a lot of research that obviously backs everything that I am speaking to right now. I'm also researching a lot of inequity in the education system in the U.S. in general. So I am sure you also know about the $1.1 billion cut introduced by the Trump DeVos education budget for this upcoming school year. So I am sure that this is something that you are willing to work with on us just for a potential collaboration and partnership in the future. That way, students like Joey Manoni, whose parents, I think, have now left, students like Joey Manoni will have opportunities to engage with their own educational paths and with other students to become well-aware of their own passions and to be able to grow and develop alongside students by also having the skills to potentially be better candidates for whatever future high school they want to attend or whatever college they want to attend, and to become more productive leaders and contributors to our society.
Mr. Cruz, can you please conclude?
Of course. So finally, I'm just looking for a collaboration and potentially a name as to whom I would contact to be in touch with these schools and potentially host another presentation about the organization to school administrators, staffs, teachers, parents, et cetera. And I know I'm out of time. Just quickly, on the post-secondary plan, something that I was concerned with when it was explicated earlier was the perpetuation of racial and socioeconomic status inequality, given that the poverty trap is very real. I don't know if you guys are aware of that model. I assume that you're all very intelligent and very up to date with that kind of research.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay, and yes.
Yes, I think your time's up. We have to get the others. But just two questions that I think require very brief responses. First off, what are you doing right now? What is your role with this organization?
I'm the vice president.
You're the vice president. And you're looking for a collaboration within CPS?
So I know that you currently collaborate with, I think, one goal. And this is a similar opportunity for students, except that this is for younger students to, again, develop and grow these important skills that are important in the long.
Dr. Jackson, is there anyone that we should refer him to?
Alan Matherstein.
Perfect. You said another question?
No, just a comment. You're just simply an outstanding speaker.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I look forward to potentially collaborating with when I graduate from college.
Good afternoon, President Clark and members of the board. My name is Kathy Dale. I'm an elected local school council member for Molleson Elementary School and Martin Luther King College Prep. I wanted to speak about both schools. I will first begin with King College Prep. King is in a crisis. Last week, or earlier this month, members, all of the students that are in the senior class held a sit-in at the school. They were concerned about safety and security issues at the school and the insensitivity of the principal about their concerns. Mr. Clark, I'll address this to you. You might know this. The percentage of black male math and engineering teachers, or any of you perhaps know within the city of Chicago Board of Education. We know that is a very, very, very low number, more than likely, less than 2%. We have two phenomenal black male math and engineering teachers at King who have been consistently harassed and pretty much being pushed out. We've had a number of black teachers and staff, approximately 10 that I know for sure, who have left the school because of dismal conditions and being pushed out by the current principal. I just wanted to mention that the percentage of black teachers in CPS, I said that there are about 10 who have been pushed out. We had a Chicago police officer who graduated four children from King, who spent his life work in that area for the last 30 years. He was, the principal called the police on Officer Gale and said he didn't want him in the school anymore. Officer Gale has literally saved lives. He chose to keep students in, chose to work in that district and made sure that students in King, at King and other schools were safe.
Ms. Dale?
Yes, I'll wrap it up. Last week, I, as an elected local school council member, was escorted out of the school by the police. I went to post, I signed in. I let the principal know that I was here. He printed out the agenda for our local school council meeting. It happened to be the same day that I did know about, that the kids had protested. It was after the protest. And I decided to stay, stand in the corner, didn't talk to anyone. And I, you know, I was just observing the after-school process. The principal approached me, told me he didn't want me in the building. I did not engage him at all. Because I ignored him and didn't engage him, he called the Chicago police on me and had me removed from the school. I think this is just an abuse of power. I have put my life for the last 40 years on the line to fight for students in Chicago public schools. To have me to be attempted arrest, especially in this state of confusion with black people being killed every day by the police, and to take police off the streets where our children, our children protested.
Thank you.
Our children protested simply because someone, not simply because, but someone got killed in that area. We know that we've lost a student at King College Prep, and their issues are not being concerned. King is in a crisis. I would like for the Board of Education to really take it seriously before someone actually gets hurt and support the teachers who have worked so hard on behalf of our children, the black male math and engineering teachers, as well as the other teachers at King.
Thank you. Dr. Jackson, wow, go ahead. You go first.
How long have you been on the LSC? How long have you been on the LSC?
I am one of the founding members who had to threaten. We hired a local, we hired an attorney to sue the Board of Education to allow King College Prep to have a local school council. So since 2003.
Yeah, you know why I asked that. I'm very aware of the election process that went on back then. And while there were a lot of resources for the LSC, for King, you didn't use any of them. You wanted to do your own thing. You selected this principal.
No, I did not.
Oh, you said you had been on, okay.
I have been, I was on the local school council. I absolutely did not vote for this principal.
Oh, okay.
And there were really some underhanded things that happened to get. I happen to have really supported the previous principal, Shontay Higginsbottom, who I think did an absolutely great job.
But if you didn't vote, but you will.
No, I absolutely did not. And there were some underhanded things that the principal and some other members of the LSC did to get Mr. Narain a contract, like cancel the candidate form.
Allow me to interrupt. I don't want to get into debate on LSC policy when there's an elected LSC there. But you have voiced specific concerns. And the question, Dr. Jackson, I was going to raise to you, this is yet again a reference to violence inside of a high school. Again, it's from one person's perspective, and I don't know facts. But I want to, I'd like you to address it.
This situation I am very aware of. Ms. Dale has made us aware by, you know, she shared pictures and some of the comments from the students at the protest. It's my understanding that the network chief is working directly with the protesters as well as the school administration and also the local school council that had concerns about this. And she sent me just some of the documentation of engagement. But I don't know if Ms. Gale, I mean, Ms. Dale feels that's sufficient. But it's my understanding that Chief Sanders is working with the school on some of the allegations that the students have put forth.
I'm not aware of that. I did call and have a meeting with Chief Sanders after I was escorted out of the school by the police. So I'm not aware of what else.
It does sound, it does sound.
But there are serious, someone is going to get hurt. I have a picture where the students have now busted the glass to the media center.
Okay, I'm really, I'm taking, the board is taking very seriously everything you're saying. I believe that Dr. Jackson, who's aware of this, is on top of this. Again, our security person is out of the room, or at least I think she is for the moment, but we'll make sure she looks at this. You presented the issue as you see it, and I'm going to, it's going to be looked at and addressed appropriately.
And I can provide the board with just a detailed update of where we are today and also make sure that the network is giving the entire local school council kind of an update from what has happened since then. Because I know they're communicating directly with the school, and I want to make sure they make the LSC aware, the entire LSC.
I appreciate that, appreciate that. But the things I said, they are factual, are facts, Mr. Clark, without a question. There was a sit-in. The glass is broken. I was escorted out of the school by the police.
I'm not debating any of your representation, not at all. I accept what you tell us. We'll look into it. I'm very concerned if there's unrest and any potential for any form of violence or anything that's disruptive.
There are fights daily that are not even being reported.
I understand that. So it will be investigated.
I appreciate it. Thank you much. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. And our last speaker is Speaker 57, please, Tom O'Donnell.
Good afternoon, members of the board. My name is Tom O'Donnell. And I'd like to share a couple ideas about improved policies to benefit CPS students. And the first policy is teaching better, accurate information. So for example, what's taught today in all Chicago public high schools in economics is that we have a scarcity of resources, that there's not enough to go around. And that's why we're always going to deal with societal problems like poverty, violence, war, et cetera. But I did some research and looked at the evidence. And, you know, when I fly in a plane across the United States and observe out the window, I see plenty of land that's filled with resources. So that, to me, indicates an abundance. So my observation is that it doesn't seem like there's a scarcity, yet it's what all the textbooks teach. Maybe we should check that out further. And, you know, the second policy is let's verify what we're taught. So I just wanted to share that with you. And any thoughts?
Interesting observations.
Very good point. It's a very good point, young man.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I may. So, Mr. President, I had noted two designated speakers for Tarkington. And there are several other individuals in the audience that wish to address the board on Tarkington.
Why don't we, why don't we have one person designated to speak for? I don't know who's left to speak.
Can you identify who the designated speaker will be, sir, for Tarkington? And your name, please?
My name is Anthony Kate Trammell.
Hold on a second. Would the people behind, have they, are they registered speakers?
Yes, sir.
Let him speak.
I'm gonna have Penny Jarrett join me, but I'll be doing the speaking.
Go ahead.
And I'll be the only speaker.
Yes.
This is Speaker number 48.
Okay.
Okay, we've heard a lot of things here. And it's tough times. You got to make tough decisions, and everybody's not going to come out of it unscathed. We got a lot of great things going on at Tarkington. We have a Becoming a Man program. We also have Between Friends and Mindful Practices. I've been on local school council for about 25 years, early in Tarkington, community activist. We fight crime. We bring a lot of stuff to the community. We have a very successful program. And let's see. I want to say that children being educated in Chicago in spite of disparities, inequalities, and lack of funds due to strong parents, community leaders, teachers, staffs, and principals. I'm a product of the Chicago public school system. I'm a Limbloomite. I went to Limbloom. And I'm a product of the state schools. I'm a lifetime member of the University of Illinois. And also a retired firefighter in Chicago. I'm dedicated, I love this city. It's a great city. And maybe one day I'll be up there. We'll see. I ran for political office also, but we'll see. I'm just doing different things.
Are you a retired firefighter?
Just retired in November, 30 years.
Truly, thank you for your service. Difficult job.
Yes, but we want to speak on behalf of Mr. Dunlap. He's a great teacher. He's one of the best teachers in the city. He loves children. He loves to teach, and he has a great work ethic. So we want you to consider that when you meet with him. Sometimes there's differences between supervisors, but he should stay in the CPS system if not at Tarkington. And I also want to speak on behalf of Darniel Hall. He has a not-for-hire thing on him. He's a good kid. He should be allowed to have that removed so he can get a job with CPS or elsewhere. That's about all I got. One last thing. Have a great day.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Trammell. And the last two individuals, Mr. President, would be Speaker number 50, please. Keisha Boyland and Speaker 53, Chris Holman.
Thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of Targington School. My son is a sixth grader at Targington, and he has had some difficult times since being there. He's been there since second grade. And I transferred him from a school where they didn't identify the issues he was having with his reading. As soon as I took him to Targington, they picked on it, picked up on it right away. And ever since he's been there, the administration has always, we've worked together, the administration, the staff, the teachers. And we've always, I've always been, I'm the, first of all, I'm the first advocate for my child. And when you have kids in CPS, I'm a product of the CPS. And I do understand the struggles, the issues. Everything is not perfect at Targington. And from what I see, that's at all schools. But if we come together, it takes a village. You guys, the CEO, everybody. If we come together and care about what really matters for these kids and not fight with one another, just like how they said, we only have one black teacher higher. I'm black, so I would not support a school that did not want my people there. And the administration, we have a black vice assistant principal. And the administration, we have a black vice assistant principal. So I do know of some of the issues, but I'm going to talk about the good, because the good can outweigh the bad. If we start focusing on how we can come together, Ms. Reisner has been such a support in helping with, just coming up with different ideas on how we can better the school. And I just want to talk on behalf of Tarkington. I love Tarkington. They have always, I'm one of the parents, I come in the door, I need to talk to such and such. I will sit here and wait until you can talk to me, because that's what I am. I'm an advocate for my child. And if don't nobody else do it, I need to do it.
Ms. Boyland?
And I just want to say I'm happy to have my child at Tarkington. I'm happy for Ms. Reisner and all the administration. I hope that we can come together and get more, we don't have that many black teachers, but I hope that we can come together and just make it more diverse. And thank you.
Thank you. For the next and last speaker, Dr. Jackson, these comments really reinforce something you said earlier. The board, when people speak to us, generally speaking, they give us the information that, for the most part, supports the view that they already have. I don't think people deliberately give us bad information, they just give us information as they see it. So, you know, hearing you speak on the same issue that others spoke on does provide the board an opportunity to get a little bit more balance, and we appreciate that.
Hi, my name is Crystal Holloman, and my daughter is a fifth grader at Tarkington Elementary. And I just want to touch on the points that Tarkington Elementary has been a great asset to our community. I graduated from Bogan, so I lived in that community prior to Tarkington even being a school there. So it was just a park district. Ms. Reisner has hands-on with my daughter. She's in fifth grade. We're looking at high school. She's going to go to Northside College Prep, but she's going to test out in sixth grade so she can go to seventh grade at Lane Tech, because Tarkington doesn't have the resources in order to push her ahead. So we're going to test out and go to Lane Tech for seventh and eighth grade, and then we're going to go to Northside College Prep. She, my daughter's in fifth grade, and she's an AB student. She's been there since kindergarten, and she wants to go to Harvard University to be a science, a medical science major. She, and then you guys touched earlier on making it mandatory for these science and math programs. And her graduating in 2023 as a major in medical science, that would be awesome. So it's mandatory, and she doesn't have to take it as elective. That way she can build her college resume with other things. And Tarkington is really, I noticed that this school in itself, all the parents are involved. And I'm a product of public school, I went to private school, and I've also gone to a charter school. I was the first graduating class of charter schools. So with that being said, I see how Tarkington is just so hands-on and how parents just are not involved with their kids anymore. But at Tarkington, we do not have that problem. Everybody is together, like I said, Ms. Reisner, and everybody, I walk in the door, they know who I am. They know who my daughter is. They know where her weaknesses are.
Ms. Holloman?
Okay, wrapping up. And her strengths are. So, and I really appreciate that in a public school. So just thank you.
Thank you. CEO Claypool, Dr. Jackson, other members of the CPS senior team, it must be pleasant to close out the public participation session with people who actually think you made a good decision. Okay, Madam Secretary?
Mr. President, that concludes public participation.
Any other questions from any board member?
Do I have a comment?
I would just like, again, to say best wishes and good luck to Dariana, and you've been a great listener, which is things good leaders do. You've taken risks. And to quote our leader, Frank Clark, you've been professional and courteous. Good luck to you next year, and we hope to hear from you again.
And we'll come back when you finish that degree in psychology. Okay, that concludes our public participation. Board member Dr. Hines, do you have a motion?
Yes. I move for the passage of motion number 17-0524-M01, and the commencement of a closed session to consider the subject specified in the motion.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll proceed with a roll call. Member Furlong?
Yes.
Member Rivera?
Yes.
Vice President Guzman?
Yes.
Member Dr. Hines?
Yes.
Member Ward?
Yes.
And Member Father Garanzini?
Yes.
President Clark?
Yes.
Seven i's, zero n's. Thank you.
Okay, this meeting will now go into closed session. Okay, we're going to reconvene the Board of Education meeting. Madam Secretary, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will start with items from closed session, and I will begin with continued council retentions. These items do require a vote, and they are: First report, the law firm Hinshaw &amp; Culbertson LLP. Second report, the law firm Nielsen, Sehe &amp; Antas. Third report, the law firm Zuber, Lawler &amp; Del Duca LLP. And the fourth report, the law firm Brothers &amp; Thompson PC. Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. I'll proceed with a roll call. Member Rivera?
Yes.
Vice President Guzman?
Yes.
Member Dr. Hines?
Yes.
Member Ward?
Yes.
Member Father Garanzini?
Yes.
And President Clark?
Yes.
Six i's, zero n's. I will continue with settlements, and these items do require a vote, and they are: First report, workers' compensation payment for lunt sum settlement for Diana Whitmore, case number 12WC17241. The second report, workers' compensation payment for lunt sum settlement for Jose Sintron, case number 14WC26383. The third report, personal injury authorized payment of settlement for Keisha Steens as mother and next friend of DS A Minor, case number 13L12214. The fourth report, personal injury authorized payment of settlement for Frank Aguirre and Linda Aguirre as guardians of JA A Minor, case number 14L004830. Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will continue with law personnel matters, and these items do require a vote, and they are: First report, appoint Senior Assistant General Counsel, Department of Law, Reagan Hildebrand. Second report, appoint Assistant General Counsel, Department of Law, Joy Kemper. Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I will continue with items from the Chief Executive Officer, and these items do require a vote, and I will begin with one talent recommendation: Approve appointment of Chief Procurement Officer effective May 15, 2017, and ratify all lawful actions taken as Chief Procurement Officer since May 15, 2017, for Jonathan Maples. I will continue with warning resolutions. The first report is the warning resolution, Olivia Balderas, tenured teacher assigned to Lázaro Cárdenas Elementary School. And the second report is the warning resolution for Charzado Nash Buckley, tenured teacher assigned to John W. Cook Elementary School. I'll continue with one other matter: Adopt finding that pupils are non-residents of the City of Chicago indebted to the Chicago Public Schools for non-resident tuition. And, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will continue with items from the board, and these items do require a vote, and they are: Resolution approving the Chief Executive Officer's recommendation to dismiss educational support personnel. The second report is the resolution approving Chief Executive Officer's recommendation to dismiss probationary-appointed teachers. And for the record, Mr. President, I would like to note that on May 19, 2017, the board members and the Office of the Board received the CEO's recommendation to dismiss probationary-appointed teachers pursuant to Board 04-1105ILCS5/34-84. His recommendation included the names of the teachers affected and the reasons, and he also noted that the teachers affected will be notified of their dismissal after adoption of the resolution. The third report is the resolution to approve the Chief Executive Officer's recommendation to dismiss non-renewed probationary-appointed teachers at the end of the 2016-2017 school year. And for the record, I would like to note that on May 19, 2017, the board members and the Office of the Board received the CEO's recommendation to dismiss probationary-appointed teachers pursuant to Board Rule 4-7B2A and 105ILCS5/34-84. His recommendation included the names of the teachers affected and the reasons. He also noted that the teachers affected will be notified of their dismissal after adoption of the resolution. And the fourth report, Mr. President, is the resolution authorizing the honorable termination of a regularly certified and appointed teacher. And, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I believe that Vice President Guzman has a motion, please?
Yes, I move that the board adopt the minutes of the closed session meeting of April 26, 2017, pursuant to Section 2.06 of the Open Meetings Act. Board members reviewed these minutes and determined that the need for confidentiality exists. Therefore, the minutes of the closed session meeting held on April 26, 2017 shall be maintained as confidential and not available for public inspection.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. I'll proceed with a roll call. Member Rivera?
Yes.
Vice President Guzman?
Yes.
Member Dr. Hines?
Yes.
Member Ward?
Yes.
Member Father Garanzini?
Yes.
And President Clark?
Yes.
Six i's, zero n's, and I believe that Member Father Garanzini has a motion, please?
I move that the record of proceedings of the regular board meeting of April 26, 2017, prepared by the secretary, board secretary, be approved, and that such records of proceedings be posted on the Chicago Board of Education website in accordance with Section 2.06B of the Open Meetings Act.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you. I'll proceed with a roll call. Member Rivera?
Yes.
Vice President Guzman?
Yes.
Member Dr. Hines?
Yes.
Member Ward?
Yes.
Thank you. Member Father Garanzini?
Yes.
And President Clark?
Yes.
Six i's, zero n's. Mr. President, I will continue with executive real estate items, and these items do require a vote, and they are: First report, amend Board Report 170322OP1, authorize a donation agreement to acquire land at 27th Street and Costa for the expansion of the Emilio Zapata Academy in Little Village. The second report is authorize the condemnation settlement and acquisition of the property at 7143 West 64th Place for the construction of a new elementary school to relieve overcrowding in the clearing community. The third report is the disposition of bids received for the sale of property located at 5055 South State Street, the former Addox-Farren School Site. And the fourth report, disposition of bids received for the sale of property located at 2833 West Adams Street, the former John Calhoun North School Site. And, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will now continue with items on the public agenda and only read the board report numbers since the titles in board reports appeared on the public agenda. And I will begin with resolutions. These items do require a vote, RS 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. And, Mr. President, for the record, I would like to note an abstention for Member Rivera on RS 5. And, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote with the noted abstention.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will continue with one policy, and this item does require a vote. It's PO 1. And, Mr. President, this item does require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will now continue with the two communications on the public agenda, and the first one is CO 1 regarding the location of the board meeting of June 28, 2017, and it reads, "This is to advise that the regular meeting of the Board of Education scheduled for Wednesday, June 28, will be held at the CPS Loop Office, 42 West Madison Street, Chicago, Illinois, 60602. The board meeting will begin at 10:30 a.m., and public participation guidelines are available on www.cpsboe.org, or by calling the board office at 773-553-1600. For the June 28, 2017, board meeting, advance registration to speak and observe will be available beginning Monday, June 26 at 10:30, and will close on Tuesday, June 27 at 5:00 p.m., or until all slots are filled. And you could advance register during the registration period by the following methods: online, by phone, or in person. And the public participation segment of the meeting will begin as indicated on the meeting agenda and proceed for no more than the 60 registered speakers." CO 2, Mr. President, is the communication regarding the 2017-2018 schedule of regular board meetings for the Board of Education of the City of Chicago, and it reads, "To the members of the Board of Education, I am hereby submitting the 2017-2018 schedule of regular board meetings. The board meetings will be held on the fourth Wednesday of each month unless otherwise noted. The board meetings will be held at the CPS Loop Office, 42 West Madison Street, Garden Level Board Room, and will begin at 10:30 until further notice. Advance registration for public participation will open the Monday preceding the board meeting at 10:30 and close it Tuesday at 5:00 p.m., or until all slots are filled or otherwise noted. Advance registration is available for speakers and observers, and you could advance, you could advance register via online, via phone, or a person. And the public participation segment of the meeting will begin as indicated on the meeting agenda and proceed for no more than the 60 registered speakers. And further, let the record reflect that the 2017-2018 planning calendar has been prepared in accordance with the Illinois Open Meetings Act, and will be available for public distribution. And we will also post this information on the website for cps.edu, as well as cpsboe.org." Mr. President, I'll continue with additional items on the public agenda that do require a vote, and they are EX 1, 2, 3, FN 1, AR 1 and 2, PR 1.